Of the CRA. If anyone does, please raise your hand.
I am a resident of the CRA.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pratt. Councilman Townsend. Yes, I also disclose ownership and interest within the CRA. Seeing there are none others, I will proceed. Now, to action item. The approval of the October 22 CRA board meeting minutes as submitted.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. As per Councilwoman Myers' request, we now have information in your packet as a discussion item, and that is advertising banner option opportunities on using utilizing existing street lamp. Sometimes they're called light standards, but basically it's the infrastructure that is within the district. For all of you that received, that has reviewed your packets prior to today's meeting, you'll see there's a variety of styles, and that certainly is something that I will invite all of you just to discuss briefly. And just starting with Councilwoman DeWes.
I'm in full support of the banner opportunities, as long as it's not every light pole within the CRA. It's my only request.
All right, Councilwoman DeWes, thank you. She, in case you couldn't hear her.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm in support of the banners on light poles.
With a caveat.
As long as it's not every single light pole.
Right, every other, every third.
To be used with good discretion, just tastefully. I'll leave that to the interpreter of the word "tasteful."
Right, thank you. Councilwoman Myers.
Well, I'm obviously in favor of using banners, and I want to thank Ryan for the work she did on getting all of this together, and I was really amazed at how many styles of light poles and lighting we have in the CRA area. I did go around and kind of look at the brown ones that are around, and they do need to be repainted, by the way. Some of them are in not too good a shape, but I think it's, it sounds to me like an exciting project and something that could benefit the citizens and the city and businesses. So, I'm interested to see where we go with it.
Right, thank you. I will reserve my comments until last. Councilman Townsend.
I don't have any comments.
All right, but we know we'll hear from you in the future.
Probably will.
All right. Councilman Johnson.
I'm good, thank you.
Yes.
I was just, is the goal of this discussion to say we're sort of in support of us coming up with some sort of policy for rentals of those? Is that what I understand, like?
Councilwoman Pratt, good question. I believe, given the context in which Councilwoman Myers introduced this, as I recall, it was in the midst of sort of budget discussions as we were recognizing some of the funding shortfalls of the CRA. Councilwoman Myers mentioned that there perhaps is an untapped opportunity, and so I think that as only a discussion item, as I feel comfortable asking the CRA to allow staff to continue this research project with the understanding that there are areas, communities, that are doing this, and it seems to be not only for providing maybe thematic consistency, but also funding opportunities.
Because in looking at the map, I also recall there have been signs, probably, I think, in the past, like the historic district had done some signs, and I thought, like the DIB or some other organization has had signs in the past, and I assume they did those for free, or, I mean, would this be a change in policy if we started charging?
I'm not aware of the DIB's program, but that's something I can look into. I don't know if they've done those for internal events or if they've allowed sponsorships, but this would be either who the city or the CRA, depending on the board's discretion.
And I'm in support of coming up with a program. I was just wondering how those things got affected, but thank you.
I think the operative word sponsorship is what we will see as being consistent when banners are displayed in other communities, and as our material showed, some of the areas exemplified in the illustrations or through the narrative provided by Ryan showed that they would often showcase events, community events, cultural arts events, even sporting events. So, I think there are some sponsorship opportunities. And now, I'll just go ahead and add my comments. I also see that this is an opportunity for neighborhood associations to use some of these, the infrastructure, to help identify their area and maybe promote some of their causes as a neighborhood association. So, I think we're on the right track. Although the campaign season is over and the elections again have been completed, I did notice in the handout, there was one lamppost that's indicated as number 11 that's broken. But I know one campaign that used a lamppost.
Forty-three.
Yeah, that's right. I was glad to see forty-three wasn't broken in here in the submittal. Any further discussion? All right, then, I believe, Ms. Winterburg, this board would like you to continue to explore this particular project, and maybe if not the next meeting, but the one after that. We could have another report with dollars associated with it.
Sure. And just to get a little clarification, there's a couple of different ways that we could structure this program based upon what other cities have offered. For example, in terms of locations, would we be looking only at commercial streets for sponsorships or residential streets for neighborhood associations? Would we be interested in one-way streets, two-way streets? And then, in terms of this financial structuring of the program, would we want only community events to be showcased on banners or public events? Would a corporate sponsor be allowed? Nonprofits only, or could it be used also for corporate advertising? So, there's a couple of different ways that we could structure this program, if anyone has any preferences that I can go in a good direction.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman DeWes.
I'm not certain, but I know there's banners over on Alkene's. I don't know if they're the Historic Preservation District or the Historic Merchants Association for that area of Seville Square and a little bit beyond that. So, there's, those are existing. Do you recall those, if they're? And the other thing would be, and I know that URAK has done a lot of investigation on the CRA, but when Mr. Cohen was here, he talked about how we identify ourselves, and we have the Entertainment District, we have the Museum District, we have the Arts District, you know, that these different areas of the CRA, that those banners could be tailored to that, even by color, different shades of the rainbow to, so people know where they are, kind of like a aircraft carrier.
All right.
Tells you where you are.
Thank you. Okay, next, information item. Update on Spring and Baylen, two-way conversion materials provided. However, Mr. Reynolds, if is available, if anyone would choose to ask him more about that project. Go ahead. Councilwoman DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to ask one last time. I know when this was presented to us originally, I had asked about the possibility of a bike lane being installed, whether it'd just be on one side of Spring on the way down and maybe one side of Baylen on the way back while we were doing this work. And I know the bump outs, per the drawings that Ms. Winterburg Lipp provided to me, that that may be a challenge. I just don't know if that was ever addressed. I have several people very interested in that that live in North Hill, wanting to travel, you know, into the city by bike, and just want to know the outcome, if they're part of it, and because I know we've talked about it at our Complete Streets meetings as well, and I think the timing is a bit off since the drawings are already done, so it'd be nice to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I did speak to our Public Works Department as well as the consultants on this project, and unfortunately, the right of way wasn't wide enough to add a bicycle. But in your Complete Streets Committee, you may have discussed a technique called "sheros." Have you discussed them? It's an option. I certainly don't want to commit our Public Works Department to doing anything without analysis, but it's an option to indicate that a road is specifically friendly to both bicyclists and cars. So, this could be a potential for a case study, but unfortunately, a bike lane in its most standard form wouldn't have fit, unfortunately, with parallel parking on both sides of the road. It was a little tight.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to go on the record and make sure everybody understood. I don't know if you heard of some of the problems that during the election day that we received some complaints from people who seemed to think that we were timing our conversion to somehow interfere with people getting to the polls. I can assure everybody that that's not the case. Apparently, there was a national radio news program that determined that we were somehow trying to stop people from voting. Absolutely, positively, it had nothing to do with any timing in regards to votes or voting or anything else, and I just want to make that perfectly clear.
Yes, thank you. We also have been provided in your information packet with the status of the CRA Retail Storefront Facade Improvement Awards. So, that is an information item only. Any new business? All right, no new business. Meeting adjourned.
I nominated you for President, Vice President.
Just an FYI.
Oh, my gosh.
That was too fast. I've got someone coming in from Milton.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, so we raced through CRA in lightning speed.
Yeah. Well, that won't happen for long, I'm sure.
Well, he said he's moving a couple up, so.
Thank you, today's, welcome to today's committee of the whole meeting. The, we have a tradition here now that is exactly two years old, called the Boyd Forum, and it gives the public an opportunity to speak to any item they want for one minute. Because we do have a full house here today, I've got to be very, very strict on that one-minute rule, because there are just so many. But if you're here to speak on something like the library, then wait till that comes up during committee, and if you're here to speak on the FOP issue, same, same, same thing there. The idea here is if there's somehow or another your city council member or the executive staff has been unresponsive, that you can just bring some item up publicly, you know, so that we can address that or remedy it. But anyway, if you do want to speak Boyd Forum, there should be yellow forums at the back table there, and I don't see anyone rising, so that'll move us on to our next.
There are no forums, man.
I'm sorry?
There are no forums, man.
What?
I thought there were.
Okay. And if there are none, and you'd like to speak, sir, please come forward and just fill the card out later. Okay.
I don't want to be first.
Okay.
You don't want to be first.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to ask the council's indulgence here, and it works out well for a member of the Park and Recreation Board anyway, but I'm going to move items nineteen and twenty up before the discussion items. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item to address today, which is item nineteen, is subject qualified target industry tax refund incentive for Project Global. The recommendation is that city council approve a resolution supporting the award of a state of Florida qualified target industry tax refund for Project Global.
Counsel?
Please.
Motion and second, discussion. From the public? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number twenty, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda, which is item number twenty, is subject qualified target industry tax refund incentive for Project Connect. The recommendation is that city council approve a resolution supporting the award of a state of Florida qualified target industry tax refund for Project Connect.
Move the approval.
Second. Motion's in order, discussion. Yes, Mr.?
I'm just going to say, I'm glad we have these two things on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, right, thank you. And the public? On favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. And now, I'm going to, I think we can draw this out long enough there, Ms. DeWes. Retaining outside legal counsel and city attorney has conflict of interest. Who was it that was most interested in this, brought this up?
Well, I asked that it, well, we voted to have it put on the agenda, so obviously the council felt that it was important. And Mr. Messer raised this issue in a memo to us that there are times when he may have a conflict of interest, and we would have to have outside counsel on an issue. So, being as we may need to do that from time to time, I think that, I don't know, how would we go about doing it? Would we just put out on RFP or just, I'll ask the city attorney, how, since you're the one that brought up that you have a conflict of interest on occasion, that would leave us without an attorney. So, how would we, how would you propose we go about doing this?
Well, Mr. Messer, you can, you can answer that, but I have a feeling we're going to involve Mr. Reynolds in this discussion as much or more than the attorney themselves.
No, I invite Mr. Reynolds to participate.
Mr. Reynolds.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and Councilwoman Myers, to address your concerns. Like any other service that we would have, once, once we have budgetary funds in place to handle such requests, we would determine what specifically it is we're looking to have on the table, and in this case, it seems to be that there are some rare instances when Mr. Messer is put in a position of not being able to either adequately give counsel to either the mayor or the council because he serves two masters. Because of that, we would define that as a limited term or a limited contract for a legal service specifically at those instances. I would recommend that as part of that process, we have in place a triggering event then that would make that particular contract come forward, and I would suggest that that triggering event would be a vote of this body, that this body then believes based upon some indication from Mr. Messer that there's a conflict, this body then makes a determination at that point that they wish to engage the services of their contracted legal counsel, and we move forward from there.
Okay, so, I think I hear what you're saying is we could go ahead and contact with outside legal counsel, and in the event we needed outside legal counsel, I think it would just be a matter of the president of the council being authorized by the council to contact that person, but at least we would have somebody on retainer in the event that we need them. Does that sound about right?
Essentially, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so.
Just one more, much like our storm debris removal program?
Absolutely, and, you know, but again, I would caution the body that it is, it is by vote of this body that that becomes active, not individual council people, and, you know.
I think we understand that, that that person would be acting in the capacity of giving legal advice to the city council as a whole and not individuals, but my question is, do we send out an RFP or do we just come up with some names and decide that way, or?
Well, if I may, ma'am, there are multiple ways that we can look at this. One is either by request for proposals or a request for qualifications, and then we can put those out on the street, depending on one or the other, which this body would request. I would suggest that what we do, if this body wants to move forward with this, is that we have the city purchasing authority come in and talk to you about the options that you have available, and then you can make a, an informed choice at that point.
Okay, I'll make a motion then that we have the city purchasing department attend the next committee of the whole to brief us on our options as to how to retain outside counsel.
Second.
Motion and second, Dr. Pratt.
I have no problem bringing the issue up to take a look at it, but if the intent is to hire somebody at this point, I believe it is really important to see what issue is before us before we hire somebody rather than hire somebody and then find out later their expertise is not in the area of the issue that's in front of us. So, my concern is that we go ahead now and move to retain someone, and if that's our intent, then my only concern, like I said, is having somebody with the expertise in the area in the issues that are before us at that time, if I make any sense.
I kind of thought about that, too, but, yeah.
Okay. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. My understanding from the, what Mr. Messer has said during meetings and other times is he basically has viewed that his responsibility is as counsel to the mayor as well as the city, and if there's ever a time when he felt that the council was asking something contrary to what the mayor would like, then, then he felt a conflict, and that's understandable. I, I keep hoping that we can come up with a creative solution other than seeking outside counsel. I recall back at some various union negotiation meetings in the previous council, we would have a situation where we would have Susan Wolf sitting with the negotiating team and Rusty Wells sitting with the council, and they sort of divided the house somewhat in that way. And I understand that Stephanie Tillery is in the attorney's office, and I would hope we could come up with a way where, you know, maybe one of, one of the other people in the attorney's office is sort of, you know, there are times when the conflict is bigger, but there, there are other times when, like when the various questions about the, you know, appointing members to boards and commissions. You know, that can be handled maybe in an hour conversation that would be helpful to all sides, and I just think it would be interesting to, to, for the attorney's office to consider a way to sort of say, all right, you know, you're partially there to help the council see what, what the legal options for the council are, not, you know, don't, don't put legal research into it, but, you know, a conversation on an issue. I just would hope we could avoid running to outside counsel when we have lots of lawyers already employed by the city. Thank you.
You know, I, I remember that as well, Dr. Pratt, and I think there was some sort of disclaimer that they ended up signing officially, or they at least came out publicly and made some sort of declaration, you know, as to what each one of them's role is, and then the Florida bar, I believe, binds you guys to, by ethics, to, you know, not colluding, you know, behind closed doors, is that there's going to be fair representation to the two different sides. And so, I, look, I've got Stephanie's name written down, down here, you know, Ms. Tillery, I'm sorry, his name written down here because I was already thinking that myself. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I would hope that could occur, too, but obviously, there may be times when that wouldn't occur, and I would hate for us to be in a position where all of a sudden we need legal counsel, but we have not retained a law firm or an attorney, and then we have to go searching, and I think that could work to our disadvantage. But the motion on the floor is to have purchasing come here and tell us how to do it, if that's something we want to do. That's the motion.
Okay. Anyone else? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes.
Oppose.
Oh, Mr. Spencer, opposed. Next item is documentation related to gallery night on October 19th and request for counsel investigation under charter rules. Who wants to begin? Yes.
Mr. President, is it okay to allow the citizens to be, speak first on this issue?
Sure, sure. Mr. Cause.
I guess I can start off. Go ahead, Chris. Citizens first, right? Citizens first.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Wilkinson. I'm a citizen of Pensacola. I live at 3555 Hope Still Road. I prepared this because I'm not a very good public speaker, so bear with me. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm coming to you today as a citizen of Pensacola. I live at 3555 Hope Still Road. I'm interested in full disclosure, in the interest of full disclosure, I'm a Pensacola police officer, and I've been so employed for 24 years. I have 34 years of law enforcement experience and have worked in two other agencies besides this one, four, if you count my part-time experience. I come to you today as a concerned citizen of this great city. I've heard many different things bantered about in regards to the incident at gallery night. The first was that police officers had been offended by the behavior of the mayor and his designee. I truly doubt that characterization. I've seen these guys work. I've seen them get cussed up one side and down the other and still operate in a professional manner. Secondly, I've heard that the police have brought this forward as a tactic to help in their police union negotiations. I'm not a politician, but I don't see how ticking off the mayor and his friends that he has on his council will in any way help the police department get what they want. Irregardless of all the reasons why, what people say and why they're here, let me first tell you firsthand why I'm here. As I've said earlier, I have 34 years of law enforcement experience, except for one Except for one incident, I've never seen this level of interference by a public official into the lawful duties of a law enforcement agency. I've worked as a law enforcement officer since 1978, and I can tell you that I understand what is meant by the good old boy system of government. That was a system that catered to those of power and connection, often leaving the common person out in the cold. I remember watching a police officer stop a well-connected person after running a stop sign in Mississippi. And the guy said, "You may want to think twice about signing that ticket because I know the mayor and I'll get your job." The officer signed the ticket and issued it. At the end of the day, that officer was out of the job. I remember asking him later if he had any regrets. And he said he had no regrets. And he said, and I quote, "If the law does not apply to everyone, then there is no sense in enforcing the law." I remember those words, and I hold them dear to my heart even today. It was out of situations like these that I had just described that the civil service wasn't acted. Civil service enabled law enforcement to do its job without undue political influence or interference. Interestingly enough, I understand the new charter did away with our civil service board. Pensacola has just recently adopted a new form of government. We are all learning as we go how to implement this new charter government. This charter, which I voted for and believe in, provides for a strong mayor, an individual that was given a lot of power by the people who he or she serves. The creators of this charter were not oblivious to the old saying that absolute power corrupts absolutely. That is why we, the people, provided you, the council of the city of Pensacola, the power to protect us from abuse of power. We have given you tools by which to do this. These tools enable you to investigate charges of inappropriate or just plain corrupt influence by a strong mayor into the workings of the city and the citizens that the city employees serve. Recently, an incident involving downtown gallery night, which we all know about involving the mayor and one of his DIB appointees. I wasn't present that night, and I cannot speak firsthand of what happened or what did not happen. However, I can speak in general about my experiences and training involving serving citizens in large crowds. At 9:00 PM, gallery night was supposed to shut down by prior arrangement made by DIB and other governmental agencies. It was determined weeks prior to that event. This information was made available to the public and was even announced in the newspaper. Out of 3,000 people, 2,998 appeared to be undisturbed by the activity that police department was engaged in while trying to clear the streets so that the public safety of the individuals present would be secured from vehicle traffic that was about to start moving on those same streets. Only two out of the 3,000 people came to our patrol cars yelling that we were acting like terrorists or saying that this was not Beirut, and it appeared that a bomb had gone off by the way we were acting. Those two people happened to be the mayor of the city of Pensacola and his recent appointee to the DIB. This action interfered with the lawful duties of law enforcement officers. And the interference of lawful duty of a law enforcement officer can be a crime in the state of Florida. But let me be clear, I'm not saying that their actions arose to criminal conduct. However, it did cause for a brief time confusion in the ranks of what is normally a well-managed police department. This confusion happened while the officers were engaged in a crowd action set forth by their chain of command, which was present that night. Why is this so serious? Well, imagine, if you will, a crowd of 3,000 people all thinking as individuals, having a good time, when all of a sudden someone starts to yell at the police officers that they are terrorists and this is not Beirut. Then imagine if some of the crowd had heard them and then realizing that they were in fact city leaders, these people started to think in varying levels of alcoholic stupor that their rights were being infringed upon unjustly and that they were being unjustly treated. The crowd, having observed that type of behavior, might have adopted a mob mentality. Police officers were easily outnumbered 75 to 1 that night, and the last thing the downtown business establishment needed was a mob action. Nothing like that ever came to be. And in spite of the two out of 3,000 people who appeared to take offense to their party being shut down early, everyone else acted orderly and in a civil manner and cooperated with law enforcement. This, to me, is not a Mayor Ashton Hayward question. I think we need to step back from this incident and make it a teaching point for this and future leaders of Pensacola as to where their authority starts and stops. For instance, can a mayor, any mayor, show up at an ESP gas installation and direct the technician to use a different type of pipe and coupling during the installation? Could he or she show up at a house fire and direct the fireman to move the hoses out of the road because it is not people-friendly?
Sir, you're doing wonderfully. But we need to kind of move it on.
Okay. These last points, sir. Does he have the right to stop a fire, tell a firefighter to move hoses out of the road or to, you know, how many pounds per square inch to pump, to set the hose? If the answers are no, he doesn't have that right, then he doesn't have the right to tell the police officers how to perform their duty, their lawful duties, their proper and lawful duties in their performance. Real quick, and I'll be glad to make copies for everybody.
I wish you would.
Yes.
And you could even just give your copy to the clerk, and it could be distributed to the rest of council.
That would be fine. In closing, I just want to see that law enforcement is responsible to the people. I didn't elect a king. I elected a public servant. And I want there to be a fine delineation between powers, where it starts and where it stops. I understand he has a great responsibility in this city and to run this city in an efficient manner to make sure that everything works fine. But that usually happens way above my head as a law enforcement officer and needs to stay up there. Thank you very much.
Okay, and thank you, sir. Mr. Goss, would you come to the mic, please? Well, I've got a particular reason for asking you.
Can I sit?
Yeah, certainly. One of the things is, I don't want this to become, you know, an hour and a half, you know, marathon on the issue. One of the things I'd like for you to do is to have all of your supporters that showed up with you today, whether they're police officers, family members, or just members of the community that showed up for this issue today. I think it's important for us to be able to see that. Would you guys please stand?
Anybody on behalf of the FOP?
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. So it's, I think that's very important. Here's the dilemma that I've got. I've talked to Chief Simmons. I've talked to the mayor with Chief Simmons. I've talked to you. I've talked to a couple of my close personal friends that are part of the police department that were with you that Thursday night that you came down here. I've looked at the videos, what few there are, the videos of downtown. And I can tell you, there was nothing about the FOPs or police officers' behavior that was at all questionable. Everything was stellar and orderly. And even the cadets were acting very, very professionally. And from prior history with a couple of the individuals that were involved, I found your story compelling and truthful, even though I was not there. And I've talked to that individual and tried to give them some fatherly advice in that regard and how I thought the behavior was inappropriate. And I'm not going to get into the name-calling and the pointing. But the reason I wanted you to come up here before others speak, I think, because of the press and the blogs and the discussion at the last city council meeting, I think what considered the facts out there are pretty well-known without a whole lot of supporting evidence. But even if we had a mountain of evidence, what I think our body needs today is exactly what it is you expect us to do. We could launch an investigation, but I'm not sure what there is to investigate. I heard about a bunch of letters. They've never been produced. I heard about the videos. There wasn't anything on there that I could see evidence. And even if there was, I'm not sure that there's criminal wrongdoing.
I don't exactly... You know, I can give you my statement, which might address a few of those, if I could.
Okay.
If I may. Okay. Let me say that, again, we're sorry that we have to be here for this. We want the city to grow in a positive, productive manner. We love this city. We risk our lives for this city action every day. I'm aware that we all make mistakes, no matter who we are or what we do and what position we are in. The issue is, when you make a mistake, you own it and you make corrections to it. This issue is not in totality about gallery night. I keep seeing this nasty spin game that it's about gallery night, that it's about it closing early, that it's about contract negotiations, false statements about contract negotiations, false statements about officers' behaviors. As a matter of fact, I think that the mayor even put a statement in the paper saying that the action of a few, inappropriate action of a few officers, which is in clear violation of Florida State Statute 112.533, which is a Florida State statute that protects our Bill of Rights. A simple apology is what we are looking for. A simple apology, and it didn't happen. Y'all have certain powers. If you want certain letters, if you want certain things done, you can subpoena. And you can subpoena the mayor, and you can subpoena everybody involved. You know the charter. It's very clear. We, again, don't want this negative attention. We want to get on with our lives. We proud to work for this city. We are proud of this city. But this kind of action cannot be tolerated. We have a chain of command. We do not take orders from the mayor. We take orders from our chief of police. That night was unacceptable. We were called terrorists. We were called, made reference to being from Beirut. And all we get from the mayor was inappropriate actions by the officers. It was because we were uninformed that gallery night was closing. It's your gallery night, Mr. Mayor. That's what we're looking for. We'll take whatever y'all want to do. We're here entrusting y'all and entrusting the mayor to do the right thing, and that's all we ask from anybody.
I've not discussed this with you, and of course, I can't discuss it with anybody from the city council and nor the mayor's staff. But if this, and I'm not talking about taking necessarily another vote on Thursday night, but if this body here today were to vote some sort of affirmative resolution, I'm asking that the mayor make some, I don't want to go to the term apology, but some public comment.
I think he already did.
Well, okay. Yeah, you're right, he did.
I mean, there's no spin to what he's... I mean, it is what it is.
You're right. Okay. So anyway, go ahead and tell us what it is you want out of this.
I don't know if we're going to get what we want out of it. What we wanted was an apology.
Yeah.
And a correction of behavior. Instead, we got a spin game, a plain and simple political spin game. I understand that there's friends and relationships involved in some of this. I understand that some of the media has even really accused us about being negotiation matters. I think first they threw Ms. Dewey's under the bus, saying that she was a wrench. Then it was Mr. Johnson that was throwing it. I don't know how to combat that. We don't know how to combat that. All we know how to do is our job. And we know that that night, our job was interfered with, and we're being referred to as terrorists. Could you imagine the President of the United States referring to his Marine Corps or his Army as terrorists when they're over there doing and risking their lives each and every night? And this has nothing to do with gallery night. We love gallery night. Keep it open until 6:00 AM. We don't care. Just don't treat us the way we've been treated. So whatever y'all decide, you know, we're all put to higher standards as elected officials and as police officers. We took into account whether relationships are involved. I put friends in jail. I put, you know, wrote in friends' tickets. We have a responsibility to the citizens and to even to your employees and the ones that risk their lives for you. Again, it's all of what you do. And it's real simple, simple behavior that America changed. You could come down here and apologize right now. I don't see them.
Well, I've got to tell you, this is really, really a sad day for me. I hope I can get through this without tearing up. I appreciate what you guys do. And I just called this and asking for a motion from council, but just asked for the mayor to make some sort of public amends towards Pensacola Police Department.
I hope we can find an upside to it. Some work.
Yes, sir. I said at the council meeting that I felt bad about what happened that evening. I think I've already gone so far as to offer my apology to the police officers for what happened. The dilemma I see ourselves, and help me think through this because I need all the help I can getting through this. I don't know if we can force someone to make an apology. And if this is a forced apology, I don't know if it's one that you would want. Am I making any sense?
No, you're correct. You're absolutely correct. But hopefully a change of behavior.
I mean, it's almost like two of your children fighting, and you tell one of them, you're going to tell the other one you're sorry. He didn't think of the idea of saying sorry. He's doing it because you told him to do it. And that's the situation that I see myself in. And if you can help me out of that, I would appreciate every bit of help I can get. But I do apologize for what happened. I think it should not have happened. But beyond that, I don't know what, you know, I can do. And if you can help me, I'll be glad to listen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Myers.
Well, I'm a little bit frustrated with the process right now because I do have quite a bit of information that I would like to share and actually some suggestions on how to address this problem. But you asked for comments from the public. They haven't commented yet. And then you kind of took over and started asking if council wanted to make motions about this and that. What I would like to do is I would like to hear from the public, which was your instructions. And then I would like to present what I have and make a suggestion. That's how I would like to proceed.
Yes.
Because we do have some options besides just, I don't think an apology from the mayor is enough.
I'm not surprised. Ms. Dewey, sign.
Do you want me to remain here, or do you want me to move?
Yes, please.
Yes, I think you all know where I stand from the last city council meeting in terms of supporting the police in what they did on that night. Since that night, the DIB has had a board of directors meeting, at which time both the chief of police and Sergeant Martin in charge of the police for the evening were in attendance. And Mr. Peacock, the DIB board member, who went beyond his authority in directing the police, was present at that board meeting. He did not offer an apology. There was a statement, a generalized, oh, well, there was confusion. We all agree there was confusion and that we've, you know, figured out where the confusion came from and disclaimers about who was or was not in a meeting. I, as a citizen, request that you, the council, direct the mayor and any board member of any of your related boards to not interfere with the police at any time except to give them information which might merit action to bring safety to people, to direct someone because you are a friend of the mayor's and you are the newly-appointed board person, who, by the way, never served on any of the subcommittees of the DIB, to understand all of the intertwining complexities that that particular decision was, I think was totally inappropriate. So while the police may be content to say, we would have liked an apology, and we know we're not going to get it, I, as a citizen, am not content that either our mayor nor Mr. Peacock have recognized that they were inappropriate in what they did. We need for the police to have enough independence of process that confusion, miscommunication, lack of answering an email, lack of hearing about it, lack of being at a certain meeting doesn't mean that someone who is uninformed and not in the chain of command steps up and interferes with the process. We had our chief of police there. We had someone in charge of the evening. The DIB has an executive director. They had an event coordinator. And we have a program person that is on the city staff who coordinates this. None of those individuals were contacted by the mayor or Mr. Peacock and asked to speak to the police and change things. Instead, Mr. Peacock and the mayor went to the officers who were supposed to be implementing the plan and directed them to change. I believe this needs to be clearly understood by everyone that this should not happen again because in the middle of a hurricane, are we going to have the mayor telling someone which street to clean up? Are we going to have Mr. Peacock telling the public works people which street to clean? We need to clearly say, board members have a meeting that they give their opinion at, and staff are the people who carry out... and staff are the people who carry out. And if you can't go through the process, you don't belong on a board, in my opinion.
Thank you. Now, in being able to hear from the public, that's exactly what I'm looking for, is I think we all understand the situation. What I was trying to avoid is just repeating the same complaints over and over and over again. But what Ms. Dubuson did is she came forward with a very clear, precise recommendation of action that she thought the council could and should take, and that's what I'm looking for from the public, if you would. Mr. Zangary. You wanted to hear from the public, ma'am. Mr. Zangary.
Thank you very much for being recognized. Well, well, well. You can blame me because the restaurant and bar owners are the ones who've been closing and paying for Palafax to be closed from nine to midnight, not the city council, not the DIB. It's our money out of our pocket. We finally stood up and said we refuse because six hundred, it costs $3,100 to close the streets from nine to midnight. Now, hold it. Let me finish. Five of us stood up and wanted to close the streets because gallery night has built into what it's been built into. The genie's not going back in the bottle. City council should have stood up in the DIB years ago to do something about this. Number one. Number two, if you wouldn't pay the DIB too much money, that extra money not paying him could have closed the streets. This would have been avoided. I have the utmost respect for every single law enforcement officer in this room and on the streets. They have the absolute power. City council doesn't. The mayor doesn't. I don't. Nobody does. Just because I'm John Q. business owner on that street doesn't give me any right to say anything to any police officer. I don't care who it is. Now, the mayor, he wasn't in an official capacity. I'm not sticking up for him or what happened. I wasn't there. I don't know. I don't know what was said. But he wasn't in an official capacity. He was, if he was on the side of the street or the side of the bar, who cares? Who, he has no authority. If he's saying, if he's yelling out things, then maybe that's something that should be brought to the public.
Okay. The purpose of this is what should we do?
What should we do?
Investigate.
Okay. Well, I got a couple.
You're getting to other policy things right now. Should we investigate the mayor? That's the item before.
Okay, I got a question. Was the mayor in an official capacity at that point of the night? Yes or no?
I'm not going to get into banding that back.
But that's the whole idea. If he wasn't in an official capacity, then the mayor, who was not a mayor at that point, made comments. I'm not sticking up for him. I'm not, believe me. These guys come first.
Okay, thanks. Ma'am?
Margaret Sheridan, 1100 East Street, citizen. And I also attend the DIB board meetings for the events, and it is an expensive proposition, and maybe the city could also look about kind of reducing the cost of having the police there. But the big thing was on gallery night, that could have been a fire. It could have been that the police needed to get the people off the streets so they could go to a fire. Anytime the police come to a citizen and say, you move, you better move. And that's including the mayor. And I wish that the mayor would come to some of these meetings. And nowadays, it's so easy. You could Skype him, and he could appear that way without even having to come to a meeting.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
My name is Jeff Brown. I don't live in the city, but I work for the police department, and I'm the first vice president. I've talked to a lot of our fellow officers about the evening, and I personally, and a lot of them feel that there does need to be an investigation for the simple fact, he went from being Ashton Hayward, gallery night patron, to Mayor Hayward, the chief executive officer for the city of Pensacola. His own statements, his own releases, he stated that it is his duty and his right to ensure that everything works well for the citizens. The second he gave that order, he stepped the line from being John Q. citizen to giving a direct order for that officer to get on the radio. The problem that needs to be investigated is, was he or was he not drinking before he did that? Because if I went out and I drank before I went to work and then put my uniform on and then gave an order, there's a code of ethics that I swore to uphold. I'm sure he had the exact same one when he swore in for office. That's what you need to look at. It's not so much the name calling, that's here, there, doesn't matter. But this is the tip of the iceberg for everything else. But that is an issue. Was he drinking before he decided? Now, that might have been, I don't know if he was or if he wasn't. I wasn't there. Was he or was he not drinking? That's what you need to start investigating as the catalyst for all that. Because when he gave that direct order, he is the mayor. He can, per the charter, can execute his powers. It doesn't say eight to five, nine to five, whenever. It doesn't give a timeframe. So he stepped forward, he did that. He gave that order, that officer a direct order. Was he, was he not drinking? His code of ethics need to become a question at that point.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Hyer.
Rebecca Hyer, 2101 Ceneka Way. You asked, President Hall, you asked for a suggestion from the public. I've heard the idea of an apology from the mayor has been brought forth. I agree totally with Dr. Wu that a forced apology is not an apology. Speaking as a citizen, I am up to here with insincere apologies from politicians at any level. I don't think that will help us. What I think you could do, and probably as a result of an investigation, is issue a reprimand to the mayor and also a reprimand to Mr. Peacock for inappropriate behavior. Now, I don't know if the council has the formal authority under the charter to reprimand the mayor, but if it doesn't, then we, as the citizens who are essentially the person the mayor is responsible to, how do we reprimand our mayor when he acts inappropriately? We need, if we do not have a mechanism to do this, we need a mechanism. We have no way to impeach him. We have no way to recall him. At the very least, we need to be able to reprimand him.
You can recall.
That's been questioned.
Yeah, you can.
That has been questioned legally, and I've actually considered getting an attorney to...
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, all right. I need to reread it.
We can be recalled again.
We can, but the mayor, okay.
So that is my suggestion, is that, first of all, of course, there would have to be an investigation to establish the facts as to whether the mayor acted inappropriately. But if he did, rather than an apology, I think a reprimand would be called for.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Myers.
Dixie Myers, 304 West Gregory Street. Please, I beg of you people in the council, don't shove it under the rug. Ms. Hyer was right. There needs to be a guideline. He does need to be made accountable. I adore our police officers. They are here to protect us, and one person, because of where he stands in the community, because he was an elected official, when he interferes because he is a mayor. You really think you have to do a whole lot of thinking about this? But please, don't push it under the rug as we have done so many times with so many things before you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, council. Ms. Myers.
First, I think you owe me an apology. I think the statement you made to me was derogatory.
I apologize.
Thank you. And I believe you're sincere because we're friends, and I know you. I take this matter very seriously, as I'm sure all of you do. I submitted two open record requests. I have not received any response whatsoever from the DIB. However, I do have enough information to state these facts emphatically. It was crystal clear from many, many advertisements that gallery night was from 5:00 to 9:00. I have stacks of various newspapers here, copies from websites, Facebook accounts from the DIB, that gallery night was from 5:00 to 9:00. I also have the list of officers who were assigned to gallery night on October the 19th and the hours they were to work, from 4:30 to 9:30. Those are the hours. And I have copies of this for every council member that has the name of every officer and their scheduled time that they were to work. There are limited videos. I did watch the ones that I was given by the city of Pensacola. The one that I found most interesting is the one of a police car stationed looking south from Garden Street down Palafax. It is crystal clear that those officers were dealing with a very dangerous situation. They were trying to get people out of the street. There was a steady flow of cars coming on both ways on Palafax Street once it was opened at 9:00, or the officers attempted to open it at 9:00. I think that they did the right thing from what I could see on the videos. Now, what concerns me is the conduct of Mr. Peacock, who this council confirmed as an appointee by the mayor on the DIB board. Under the DIB Act, the council can remove Mr. Peacock for cause. I believe, based on what I have seen, and I have to say that what I, the information I have here is limited because I haven't gotten records from the DIB. I haven't gotten all the records I've requested from the Pensacola Police Department. But based on what I have seen, I think that it does warrant a further investigation because I would like to see us to consider removing Mr. Peacock from the DIB board. That's one action we can take because we have that authority under the DIB Special Act. The second thing I think should be looked at is whether or not the mayor and Mr. Peacock violated the union contract with the city. And this is what I want to read you from the union contract. This is the agreement between the city of Pensacola and Florida State Lodge Fraternal Order of Police, beginning October the 1st, 2009, through and including September the 30th, 2012. And is this the contract that's being renegotiated?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I want to read you from the existing contract. Under secondary employment, now, these officers were hired by the DIB. They were off-duty police officers. Now, this is a standard that off-duty police officers must maintain when working at secondary employment. However, officers engaged in off-duty security employment should remain constantly aware that they are law enforcement officers utilizing equipment provided by the city of Pensacola while engaging in such activities, and they are perceived by the public as on-duty officers. And this is the important line. Therefore, all officers are directed to conduct their behavior while working off-duty in exactly the same manner and following all applicable policies and procedures as though they were working on their scheduled tour of duty. In other words, they were conducting, as far as I've heard, and I've heard nothing to the contrary, they were conducting their duties as they should conduct them under this union contract here. Furthermore, this union contract prohibits interference with police officers doing their duties. It says, "Under no circumstance will any officer working off-duty disregard any law enforcement responsibility or violate any policy or procedures of the Pensacola Police Department at the request or at the direction of an off-duty employee." This is extremely important. Independent judgment as a law enforcement officer must prevail in every situation. I believe, based on the statements that I have heard from the police union and from the press, that the statements made by John Peacock and the mayor were inappropriate, highly inappropriate and very disturbing. According to an article by Jeremy Morris, he quotes the mayor as saying, the officer told Mayor Hayward, this is when Mayor Hayward approached an officer, the officer told Mayor Hayward that he was relaxed. Mayor Hayward then said, "Get on that mic and tell him to relax," referring to the officer supervisor. Do you want me to do it? I cannot imagine, and I have been in law enforcement when I worked for the sheriff's department doing volunteer parking enforcement. I mean, I cannot even imagine myself in that type of situation. And to threaten to take away an officer's mic, let me tell you what the most important piece of equipment an officer has is not a gun. It's your mic. You never want to lose your radio. You never want to lose your mic. That can save your life. That can get you your backup. But obviously, if the mayor said this, I find that very disturbing, that he would try to take over or threaten to take over the functions of a police officer who is trained in crowd control, and rather than calling that officer supervisor and letting that supervisor handle the situation. So I believe it's also a violation of Pensacola Police Department general order, which, by the way, is also based, the language in this order is taken out of the union contract. And whether the union contract is enforced right now is irrelevant, really, because right now, we have an order that is a standing order that uses the very same language as the union contract.
Okay, okay. You've done a great job.
Well, I'm not through yet.
Well, I know you're not, but what action do you want to see the council take?
Well, I think the action, the council has some choices. I think, one, we can continue to investigate this, and I think it warrants investigation because I haven't gotten all the information that I feel that I need. I think we could set up a committee of maybe three council members to look further into this.
Do you know which information you're missing?
Well, I've asked for open records requests from gallery night. I would like to see, for instance, I haven't been able to get any permits to verify that even gallery night had the permits that they were supposed to have, and just to get a clearer understanding of how have these streets been able, if they have in fact been closed after 9:00? Who got the permits? Who paid for it? I actually think the council should exercise our subpoena power and subpoena the officers because I have tried to talk to some of the officers, and they are not inclined to talk to me. There, again, they've been told, you know, that they're not supposed to talk to city council members, so maybe that's why. That's another reason to exercise our subpoena power. But as to Mr. Peacock, I would like for the council to entertain the idea of removing Mr. Peacock from the board for cause. We have that authority, and I think we should exercise it. And if...
Now, is that a motion to put on the agenda for next time?
Well, I'll make a motion for the next committee of the hall that we consider removing Mr. Peacock from the DIB board.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Spencer.
Yes, thank you. You know, I'm sitting here, I don't know if my state of mind is speechless because I am, I'm just amazed at what seems to be short-term memory on the part of this council. In fact, President Hall, you were the individual that was subjected to tremendous council scrutiny. Councilwoman Dewey, as I recall, made the motion. I don't know who seconded it, demanding your resignation as president during the Nathan Monk incident. And I certainly can be correct that I don't have agenda information in front of me. I have watched with amazement this council, members of this council, reach a level... I have watched, with amazement, this council, members of this council, reach a level of inflammatory comments that are verge on irresponsibility, in my opinion, as it relates to why we have been elected to this office. I am absolutely a supporter of objective analysis, and understand our responsibility as elected officials. But, again, there's a motion and a second, and I'm trying to keep my comments to that, and that is, I do not support the motion. I do not think Mr. Peacock has done anything that is egregious to the point that merits his removal, and I better stop.
Anyone else from this side? Ms. Dewis?
No.
Ms. Wu.
I think Jeremy Morris in the Independent put down my feelings on the comments that were attributed to Mr. Peacock. The only dilemma is, I received an email from Mr. Peacock, saying he did not make those statements, so. So, all I can say then is repeat what was in the Independent. What I said in the Independent was what bothered me is if, if, and please note that I'm saying if, if the comment was made that I was a friend of the mayor, and again, I keep reiterating the word is if, and Mr. Peacock has said he did not say that, my concern is, is that we cannot have two systems of law. You can't have a system of law for folks who don't know the mayor, and a system of laws for folks who do know the mayor. I can imagine the chilling effect on law enforcement when you stop somebody in the middle of the night, and you're, if you get into the situation where you're going to say, "Well, gosh, is this person going to be, you know, somebody who knows him, and then I'm going to get in trouble for doing my job?" And the thought of that happening horrifies me. The dilemma I found myself in is, is I believe that perhaps something should be done, but I don't know if I see it to the level of action that you're suggesting, not to say that what you're suggesting is wrong. I'm just saying, in my own mind, I see something happening, but as I said, Mr. Goss, early, I'm still trying to grapple with what that should be. In a perfect world, I would like to see, say maybe a two-week time period, where we perhaps, if you feel more comfortable moving forward with an investigation, we do that, but also encouraging strongly the two people involved, perhaps to get together with law enforcement, and sit down and have a discussion. Because I think what needs to happen is, this needs to be resolved, if possible, between the principals. What's happening is being thrown to us to be the referee. And I don't see our roles saying, "You have to do this, you have to do this, you have to do that." Rather, what I'd like to see is a resolution to this, is the principal sitting down and trying to resolve it before we get more involved. Now, does that mean we cannot proceed to investigation, as you suggested? No. But I'd like to see those two things occur simultaneously, Mr. President.
Ms. Dewis.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate your efforts to move the discussion along and to ask for motions at this time, but I think there's still some more to discuss on this issue as a whole. I second the motion and support of Ms. Myers, but feel there does need to be investigation before that action would be taken, so I don't know if we need to take a vote, or if we can table that until we decide all these other things. I feel like that's third or fourth down the line of what we're discussing here.
Well, you withdraw, you withdraw your second, Ms. uh...
I'm not going to do that to my humble colleagues.
I'll withdraw the motion at this time.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Can I speak to what Dr. Wu said?
Yeah, yes, sir.
We weren't the ones who made this public. The mayor and his appointee approached us in public, interfered with our duty, and called us that. We were not the ones to make it public. We come to y'all to do the right thing, and we ask for the right thing to be done. Plain and simple.
Okay. You know, with me, I've never, I've never made it a secret, that I consider the mayor a personal friend, I've probably been one of his biggest political allies, even to people, more so than some of the people on this council that are closer to him personally than I am. But I find the reports from the FOP compelling, and it saddens me. I stand with the police officers on this, and I do ask the mayor to issue a sincere apology. So, anyway, that said, the one, I think, affirmative suggestion that we've had has come from Ms. Dupasson, and I'd like to have a motion from somebody on council that would allow Ms. Dupasson to sit down with the council executive and discuss that issue thoroughly, to have some sort of motion for council to vote on at the next committee meeting. I do believe that we need to have something on the books, that even though the mayor is the chief executive officer of the City of Pensacola, these men do work for him, that is, and something that may even has some teeth to it, that keeps police officers on the street, regardless of what capacity they're in, you know, contract employees, if you're wearing the uniform, that would keep the mayor or other city board members from interfering in their job. So, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to share my thoughts now, and I think that Ms. Myers has brought up some very good points about the contract, as well as the citizens that have came and spoken about several things. You know, a hundred years ago, the Seville Tower was the tallest building in Florida, and policemen at that time, and I found this in the history of our Pensacola Police Department, anyone can go online and look at this, and it's very enlightening. Police were so respected at that point, they could simply say gangway, and that meant clear the way. No one would dare question. Now, we need sirens, or lights, or whatever we need to, to have a situation be under control. So my concern is, there's two concerns, because there's a couple of things that have happened here. What was brought to light today, the events of Gallery Night, have to do with the possibility of interference with police officers. And as you, as a retired military person, you know that if this were a military situation, there is a JAG Corps that runs parallel to the entire military, and the military police do not answer to the base CO, and they do not answer to the people in the rank of the military, they answer in the JAG Corps. So it's totally separate, and nothing like this could have ever happened. It shouldn't happen in a city of 52,000 people, at an event like DIB, that is a wonderful event. And it did. I am not going to share my opinions, I'm obviously frustrated about it, as everyone in this room and in this community are, about what happened. But I do want to go through a timeline of things that I believe we should, we should understand. There was an email sent to us as council, after the Pensacola Police Department came to our last meeting, that we would like information and documentation on what had occurred. We were made aware of two letters, without names given, of the police officers. Councilwoman Wu brought up the state statute, section five, about worries about retaliation, if they had brought that information forward and wanted to ensure their safety. So we, those were read into the record. But there was a statement issued from the mayor on the thirty-first of October, and twelve thirty-nine is when it came to all the council members. And it did talk about the chief executive officer of the City of Pensacola, that it was his job to ensure that officers interact with citizens in a positive and respectful manner. It was short on these statements that were actually made to the press. There was an email from Mr. Reynolds shortly after that, at twelve forty-six, about no complaints. There is officially, as he had noted by the FOP representative that at the council meeting, there is no official police report of this, no official complaints filed by any citizen or an elected official. So there's nothing that is a formal complaint. To back up for a moment, this event was planned at the DIB. The DIB was made aware that it would be complicated. The plan was determined, the twelve officers carried it out. What happened after that, only the mayor and Mr. Peacock can answer for that, and they have not to this point. The statements that were made in the press are what concerns me the greatest, because we have the issue here of interference in that situation, that we need to make a motion and investigate, get sworn statements from everyone involved, if it can be an internal investigation, where there is no interference from the mayor or his staff, that's possible, it may need to go to FDLE, because that involves their union contract, they are sworn officers of the state, it may need to be that independent. I don't know. Maybe Mr. Messer can give us that answer. But what concerns me are the statements of our mayor in the press, because it has changed the situation from a very inappropriate situation that occurred on Gallery Night, to, he has stepped out of the bounds, in my understanding of these state statutes, and this is my concern that I would like to inquire into, by saying that he expects the officers to treat people with respect, and that he will hold them accountable, and that several officers acted unacceptable, or actions were unacceptable, excuse me. That is making a complaint in the press. Instead of coming to us and explaining what happened, or going to the police officers and giving them an apology like they requested, that was made in the press. There is no written statement from him, or a written complaint, per these state statutes. So there's nothing, except this in the press. So my concern is, is that not only has he made those statements, but the police officers were not interviewed, they were not allowed to respond. It has stepped outside of our ability to resolve that issue, because of the actions and the statements of our mayor.
Just one second, just on one point there. Were you, Mr. Goss, were you guys not allowed to respond?
I don't, I don't think there was an actual chance for response. That was his response to the media through Mr. Cosson, or some other, to the press. It was, it was...
Okay, I thought you meant respond to us as council members.
No, no. My concern is that every officer of the Pensacola Police Department is a sworn officer, they swear to protect the Constitution of the state, they are sworn to state statutes, they protect our citizens, based on those, in addition to the ordinances, or primarily, and then our ordinances are added on to that. They weren't afforded due process. The things that I want to make a statement and read into the record today, is that there is no formal complaint, that is very clear, okay? There's a statement by our mayor in the press, and there is a statement that was issued to us. That's it. That statement in the press is an indictment of all that were working that night. When you think about it, that's saying that all of them misbehaved, because he has not said who acted in an unacceptable manner. If an investigation can be done internally, a sworn statement from everyone involved will accommodate that, and then this council can determine what needs to happen beyond that. We do need to make a statement, whether official, I don't know how we would do that as council, if it becomes an ordinance about interference of elected officials. So there's several things that we need to address. So I'm finished with my statements. I do have those questions, though, is if this investigation can be handled internally at this point, since it's involved twelve officers, and our mayor, and a citizen, if it should be something that, due to the state statutes that are now involved, be handled by the FDLE. If someone could answer that question, then I'll make a couple motions.
Okay. Ms. Dunlap.
Thank you, Mr. President, for recognizing that I did want to speak. I am not here speaking on behalf of the DIB. I am speaking to you as a firsthand representation. I was there at the meeting, at almost every meeting of the Special Events Committee, who for years, since Gallery Night was destined to just go away, that the DIB stepped up and took it. And it is the Special Events Committee of the DIB that follows all the procedures laid down by the city to have an event. It is a DIB event, it is not an Ashton Hayward event, and I say Ashton Hayward, and not Mayor Hayward, because I think he stepped off of his duty when, never mind. Anyway, Mayor Hayward and his appointee, John Peacock, whom y'all approved, to the great dislike of many people, because there is now no diversity on the DIB board, and be very careful of what's coming down the pike there, you're not going to like it. Thirty-one hundred dollars, as Mr. Zangary said, is what it costs for the after-party. Let's recognize this for what it is. The DIB pays for Gallery Night. Gallery Night has, and always will be, the five-to-nine event. That is where many of the business owners would like to keep it, because no one benefits from the after-party, except the bars and some of the restaurants, who do stay open. We do not believe, as a committee, and it is documented through our votes, as a democratic committee, that the taxpayers, or the broad-based business owners of Palafox, should pay for the after-party. We are more than willing to pay for the Gallery Night. In the meeting prior to, just prior to Gallery Night, your, who is the attorney that represented the police there, was that Ms. Wolf?
Yeah.
Okay. I ask specifically of Ms. Wolf, why do the police officers have to make such an overt show with their sirens and their bullhorns? Is there another way that we could disperse the people, to let them know that the streets are now open? And I will paraphrase here, but she told us that unless there is a very visible, very unmistakable action by someone, in this case, the police, to let the public know that the streets are now open, that there will be vehicles coming down through here, if one of these somewhat inebriated, or maybe somebody who is just looking at a beautiful piece of art, they just bought, does not know the streets are open, and they walk into traffic and hit, then the DIB is liable, the city is liable, and so the police are there at the direction of what we have been given as a guideline for our event, and for which we pay insurance. And they are protecting not only the DIB, they're not only protecting the city, which is you and us, but they're protecting the citizens, to let them know, yes, the event is still going on, you can't tell people to go home, but you can let them know the traffic's going to be coming down the street, and that is all they were doing. They were not closing Gallery Night. For years, the Special Events Committee has asked that the city please recognize, as Mr. Zangary said, the genie's out of the bottle. We've created an event that is so good, that thousands and thousands of people want to come down. The committee democratically voted that unless those who benefited from the after-party were willing to pay, that we would not pay for it. The DIB has a balanced budget, and it's very critical that we stay there. So the bar owners knew what would have to be done by a specific time. That time came and went, the bar owners did not bring the money, now I understand, it was a very concerted effort, and bravo, maybe, you know, to get the city to be forced to do something. But my God, to bring shame upon such a beautiful night, and such a great event, that we have worked our butts off to create, that didn't require any economic dollars, it required the dollars of the business owners downtown, and how dare this appointee and our own mayor bring shame upon this event and our city in this manner? This hour-long conversation is evidence of that shame. Mr. Peacock will tell you that the Gallery Night insurance was already paid for, therefore the streets should have been left open. Mr. Peacock doesn't know this much about how we have the insurance written, when we are to have it paid back, and by the way, are Mr. Peacock or Mr. Hayward here? I'm ashamed of that, too. I would recommend that you do an investigation with sworn statements. do an investigation with sworn statements and go from there. And I would also recommend that Mr. Peacock be removed from the board. Thanks.
Okay. And thank, thank you.
President, I have ten seconds.
No, sir.
Ten seconds.
I need you to respond to.
I wanted to ask her a question.
I think we've got.
Okay.
I'm going to make a statement.
Okay. Ms. Dunlap, I need you back up here, please. Now, folks, we've been on this over, over an hour. We're looking for something positive to move forward to. Okay. Okay. Let's start on this end.
I think she had a specific question.
Okay.
We want to make general statements.
General statement.
Okay, all right. Ms. Myers.
Yes. Were you on the DIB board in September of 2011 or one of the subcommittees?
I have served on almost every committee, and the date would escape me, but yes, I was appointed. I think my term ended in June of, it was, I don't even remember when. It was either 10 or 11. Yes.
Okay. But you do attend all of the meetings?
Oh, yes.
And you're very involved with the DIB?
Yes.
The reason I'm asking is I have a viewpoint article here from the mayor that was published on September the 25th, 2011. It says, "Gallery Night Issues Are Good Problems To Have." And, well, I didn't bring this up to be funny. I mean, it's a good article. It's a good viewpoint, but what, and it's very positive. But what, what he did say is, "Over the next few weeks, I will be working to build a consensus for the timing and structure of future gallery nights that will help all of our downtown businesses prosper while providing a great evening of entertainment for our citizens." And I was just wondering if you knew whether or not the mayor had had those meetings.
To my knowledge, no, ma'am. He may have had a private conversation with our former executive director, and they may have had an opportunity to talk about this, but to my knowledge, no, ma'am, because we repeatedly suggested that the after-party, that, that there was no reason the streets couldn't be kept closed for the safety of the citizens. But it all comes down apparently to the police officers need to be paid for their time. And at that point, it, they were still our, they were under the, the direction of the DIB, and it also had to do with our insurance. And the city was unwilling to put them on city time, and the insurance company needed a clear direction, apparently. Verify this for me if you can, but they needed clear direction as to when the event ended and when the DIB's liability ended.
I was just wondering, wondering if anything concrete materialized, to your knowledge, from the mayor's statement that he would, he would be meeting and trying to improve gallery night, the structure and timing and so forth?
My answer would be no, not to my knowledge.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. I called you the mayor. This is a somber day for Pensacola for us to have this, this big friction here in the city of Pensacola. I really don't want to make any decision by quoting from the newspaper article. A newspaper article can very well skew things in a manner in which they want to present it to the public. And I refuse to make a decision on any kind of article in that manner. I would like to have facts. It's been stated that there hadn't been no complaint submitted. It's been stated, but no complaint has been submitted in, to, that I've seen. The other thing that's mystifying to me, now, we have a legitimate chain of, if I want to call it command, I'll call it command. Now, the chief, I think he came for, at our last meeting, but I'd like to hear more from the chief. You know, just, just what went down on that. How did they react? What sort of report you get? Why don't we have any video of this thing? Why don't we have any report? Those kinds of things are essential for me to make a legitimate decision. Now, we can get emotional about we need to treat the police officer right. I'm, you know, I'm all in favor of that. But the police officer is accountable. The mayor's accountable. We are accountable. But we need facts to make a legitimate decision, in my opinion. And it's been stated, so I just need something more to say, hey, I want to fire somebody. I want to put in a referendum for somebody. I want to recall somebody. If you want to have an investigation, fine, but let's, let's do it. How you do it, doesn't matter to me, but bring forth some facts where people can make a legitimate decision and an objective decision.
Yes, sir. Mr. Bear, I see you out there, but Mr. Spencer, it actually, I think, wanted to respond to something earlier specifically.
Yes, thanks. This is more of a, more just on an update level to respond to Councilwoman Myers' question to our Speaker Deborah Dunlap. I was recognized in the last DIB meeting to be the DIB board member. There was a motion and a, and a second, and then a vote that invited me to work with the Special Events Committee Chair, Jim Sweida, and it might be Sweida, S-W-E-I-D-A, Sweida, Mr. Jim Sweida of Blue Morning Gallery. Jim and I have spoken twice this week to coordinate schedule. He definitely discussed with me his work and effort and, and goals and hopes as someone that serves on the Special Events Committee. And we are going to be meeting with the mayor as we were asked by the DIB to, to do so, to address gallery night. And, Council President, that, that answers that specifically. I'd like your permission to just add a few more comments, then.
Why not?
Okay, thank you. And in that, what I hope to do, and what was the message I was asked to carry by the DIB, was to invite the mayor, the administration, to recognize the opportunity and responsibility to embrace gallery night as a community-wide event. As was stated earlier, and with the cliche, the genie's out of the bottle, is it may be suitable for the mayor, and again, administration, and us as council members to recognize now that this gallery night has become or matured to create a sense of place. It has grown to be an event that ensures a certain level of beneficial vibrancy to our downtown. So that is the message that we plan to carry to the mayor. And as Ms. Dunlap said, this has been an event that was sort of an adopted stepchild, almost one that was left at the doorstep. And the DIB has done everything it can to help nurture it. It's grown. And I think that, that there is strong rationale that supports the city council actually facing, again, the opportunities and responsibilities to carry this tradition on so that ultimately there will never be a repeat of this sort of uninformed closure or change of the street. And Council, while Councilwoman Myers did certainly provide lots of advertisements indicating it was well-publicized, I contend, I have sat here amongst fellow council members that were unaware of certain advertised or media-related information. And I did hear from people, those that are throughout the community, as many advertisements as there were, they expected an after gallery night from nine to 12. So I hope that the city recognizes we've got, again, an opportunity to, to create an institution and a legacy in the form of what was gallery night. Thank you.
Mr. Bear.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, two weeks. I can make it.
[laughing]
The issue here goes back to what somebody said earlier. It's a chain of command issue.
I hope that's encouragement. Yes.
I don't know. It's an exciting time to be coming on the council, I will say right now. It comes back to a chain of command issue. And what we hear, have here is a clear issue of bullying, which as a kid, I didn't like bullying. As an adult, I like it even less. And in this case, the mayor overstepped his bounds. He talked to a police officer trying to tell them to do, what to do with their job when he could have talked through the chain of command to the chief of police. Now, maybe to him it seemed rational that he was in charge of everybody and he could talk to them that way, but it's not. And there are a few things that you can do, and one of them is already mentioned, I think, well, investigation, obviously, but censure is something that you can do. It's within your power to do. It's not, it doesn't have teeth to it, but it, it recognizes inappropriate behavior. In this case, it was very inappropriate, and it's, it says, "By which a person harasses, embarrasses, or humiliates members of law enforcement," or of any agency, for that matter. As a former law enforcement, as also a former military, as a military police officer, I know the rules as far as, as I was the lieutenant on Fort McClellan, that a, a PFC or private could pull me over and give me a ticket, even though I outranked him. There are certain ways to go about doing your business. And the fact is, this council is the governing body, which I will be a member of in about two weeks, and you are responsible to the citizens to provide the services that are incumbent upon a city to provide, which is law enforcement. In this case, I think clearly Mr. Townsend has made the case for an investigation. This, this conduct, obviously, you don't have enough information to act right now. I appreciate Councilman Spencer's comments on the, the future of gallery night. I think it could be great. But we have to understand the roles and, and, you know, who is in charge of, of the resources in our city. And clearly, the mayor has a responsibility to manage the resources, but we've got to have some way to have a chain of command that's identifiable. And this council needs to realize that if you just sweep this under the rug, that you're just as guilty of, of any kind of inappropriate behavior as the mayor is in this particular instance. And as a council member, I won't stand for that. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you. And I, I can assure you, whether it's this council or the next council, this isn't going to be swept under the rug. All I'm trying to do is get us directed towards what is it we're going to, to do. Because I'm starting to hear a lot of repeat of the gallery night issues. Some of that's going to be worked out with the DIB, some of it maybe with the CRA and then the city at, at large. But really, the, the big interest, I think, right now is what, what do we do investigating that night, if anything at all? And I, I can tell you, it's not going to go away before you get here, Mr. Bear, and, and regardless of what we do today. So, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I said it Thursday night, and I said it again. Under the charter, it's your responsibility to do the investigation. Mr. Townsend said it. Exactly what we are asking to do. You gather the information. You subpoena the officers. You subpoena the mayor and have him come in here and talk to you. I don't care if you all do it or if you have a committee like Councilwoman DeBree said. I mean, someone's got to take some action, and something has to be done. I'll sit here and listen to it. You want direction? I don't know what else you can ask for. You've got the directions. You need to do the investigation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did you want to speak to Mr. Bell directly?
No, no. I'm just trying to make motion.
I've got, well, I've got these two right over here that want to talk. And then Mr. Messer is going to address the mechanism of the point you were interested in. So, Mr. Johnson.
Well, thank you very much. And, you know, I'm just going to make some general comments. You know, this isn't how, the statement that, that the mayor released is not how I would have, would have handled this. I'm not the mayor. I'm a city councilman. But I heard Detective Goss talk about an apology, or maybe just a meeting, maybe between the officer and the mayor. And I wish that would have happened. I wish that we would have turned the heat down on this instead of release this statement, which actually turns the heat up. It lies in our lap, and we're trying to figure out what to do. And it's, it's tough sitting here. I support law enforcement as much as anyone before you today. I try to support the mayor as much as anyone sitting before you today. So we're in a tough spot. We're in a tough spot. I wish that this would have been handled behind closed doors before today, but obviously, it hasn't happened that way. The spin that the media puts is, is just so unfortunate. I've been the victim, the victim of spin by the printed media on this, and, and I find it offensive. What we can do about it, I don't know. I think Mr. Morrison in the back does a pretty good job. I think there's others that, that do an awful job and do a terrible disservice to our community for the awful spin they put on things. It's disgusting. Did anything criminal happen that night with the mayor, with Mr. Peacock? I'm not sure. I'm not sure what the criminal charges were. I would defer to Mr. Messer or, or police officers in the room. I think that there's been suggested that this turns over to the state attorneys offered the FDLE, and I'm not sure what the criminal charges would be. I think of the greater good. I think of the greater good of our community. I think if we prolong this and we keep this going, is it good for our community? Is it good for the police officers, their families? Is it good for the mayor? Is it good for the city of Pensacola? You know, I struggle with that. I struggle with what to do. If we do an internal investigation, which I, if, if that's the way we go, I think that we, that would be the way to do it at this point. I, what do we do? I think we can remove Mr. Peacock if we find wrongdoing. I believe that we have the power to, to, to remove him from the DIB. But what do we do with, to the mayor? I mean, if the mayor's found wrong, I'm not sure what, what actions the council can take to, for the mayor if he's found to, to, to have some kind of misconduct. So I'm just not sure about that. But, you know, something happened, and I'm just going to wait and hear the rest. Looking forward to hearing from Dr. Pratt. And I just feel, I feel sad for our city. If I would have been advising the mayor on, on his statement, it would, this statement would have not been the one that I released. I would have tried to defuse this situation. I would have met with the police officer and have offered an apology. I would have said, you know, in the heath of moment, maybe things got a little bit out of hand and tried to defuse this instead of making, turning this into what it's turned into. I feel with it, that would have been the best way to handle it. But, but this thing is where it's at today. I look forward to hearing from the rest. Thank you.
Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say that I was, I was upset to see that, that this, the spin that the officers were possibly doing this because of union negotiations. I have such respect for our police officers, and they are officers first, second, third, and maybe down the list. They're union members. And I, I believe that, yep, they are a union, and we have to have them, and that's what it is, and that's a way to work with them. But it's not, it should never have been perceived that they were doing this as a union tactic.
Here, here.
Second of all, I, I think that this all is sad for the city. I, ultimately, I, in my heart, I don't want to have to do an investigation. You know, I, often we'll see all of the criticism of the council and, and people who say, oh, the council's all buffoons, but the mayor is amazing. But what we forget is we're the city, and we're the city government. And when the council's buffoons, it reflects poorly on the city. And when the mayor screws up, it reflects poorly on the city. And we all have invested time and energy to doing good things for the city. And so this, this is frustrating on that level because I don't, I don't want to say bad things about the mayor because it reflects poorly on the city. Then on to the, the issues. The, I think that the ultimate question is, you know, the procedures. Do we have a chain of command that's respected by all parties? You know, the, the only chain of command that, that the charter has is that the city administrator's in charge of the day-to-day operations, which I would think somehow then the mayor is not in charge of the daily operations. And so one would think he wouldn't be directly, direct with officers. You know, the officers are trained on certain procedures. They know what they're doing when they get out there, and they shouldn't be countermanded by someone higher up, way higher up. You know, there's immediate supervisor, sure, but not on the spot. You know, it's the responsibility of mayors not to, to take action that night, but to set policies for employees to ensure that it's a safe workplace. Don't put them in a situation where things can get out of control and, and make sure they're behaving as a city the way we hope that we can all be proud. We've mentioned a few times about an apology and whether an apology is real. I, I think back to when my children were at Montessori. I think Mr. Bear's kids were there at the time of Mr. Hayward's kids there now. And they have a very interesting approach. They don't make you apologize. They, if, if you have done something wrong to somebody, that person gets to have you as their slave until you, they say they're okay. You know, if you, if you, if you punch a kid. You know, if you, if you punch a kid, and, and they're hurt, then you say, what does Bobby need to do to make you better? And if you say for the rest of the day he has to bring you water, then you do. It's, it's an interesting consequence. Usually with little kids, I do this with my kids because of that, and they, they say, you know, I tell them, maybe tell them to do some jumping jacks and get over it. But, you know, an apology is easy, and, and I think that, that we need to get beyond an apology, but a, a responsible statement, that, that there was something wrong and we need to fix it. You know, there were also allusions, this should have been, this, this is an internal issue. Well, it would have been great had this been handled internally if we had, if, if the, the police officers felt like their, that their chain of command, all the way up and down, they could come and say, this is wrong, and they would know that it would get fixed. Instead, they felt that they couldn't trust that chain of command, and they needed to come outside to fix this problem. And that, that is sad. And at this point, you know, it can't be the genie's out of the bottle. It can't be put back in to be an internal investigation. The public deserves an answer, and they need to trust that, that our administration will support our officers. This was a, this was an easy one, you know. Several of you were here for some harder police issues, then how, how is our administration going to stand behind the officers if there's a death or other things that, that are a lot less fun? You know, when this came up, the council said, we want to hear both sides' story, we're not going to rush to judgment. And when, when we had the vote to put this on the agenda, I sort of, I, I waffled, because I thought, well, surely the mayor will respond appropriately. He will give us this statement that, that really helps us understand. But as you saw, there's nothing in our agenda. I, you know, there have been private meetings, there's been, you know, off-the-record discussions, but there's nothing that the public can see. And I think it's important, whether, I struggled with, well, what can we do? And, you know, really, there's nothing criminal from what's being alleged. I don't think, you know, there's not much we can physically do, but the public deserves an answer. And we deserve an answer as a city government, that, that we have, you know, confidence in this city. And so, I think a report of what happened is, is necessary. And just to be able to say, this has happened, these are, these were oversteps, these were of the line, you know, right now, you know, it's, I've only heard one side of the story publicly, so that's, that's what I have to go with. And, and I think that we need to have clear answers, and the public deserves an answer. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Messer, you were going to talk about the mechanisms for the investigation.
Can I real quickly?
Yes, sir.
We're more worried about an ethic or an oath violation, not, not a criminal violation in steps. And I've been told by our council that the mayor is not in our chain of command, chief of police is, we take orders from him, not the mayor.
Okay, okay, understood, thanks.
And, and just for those who asked the inevitable question, no, I haven't rendered any advice to the mayor on this issue. But I, I think, you know, there's a, an old sort of saying, it's like a nursery rhyme or a children's story, it, it is to the effect that, let's start at the very beginning, which is a very good place to start. And I, I think what, what you have to start with as a council is a structure, a roadmap of where you want to go and how you're going to get there. And I can't tell you what to do, but I think there are some concepts that you're going to have to come to grips with sooner rather than later. So, let's talk about four concepts that you might use to try to help you through this mess, because it's not getting any better as time passes. Number one, we're going to have to figure out whether this is, as several council people have mentioned, a criminal matter or a civil matter. But it really doesn't matter, because regardless, we're going to have to start with the proposition that every man is presumed innocent until, until proven guilty. So, anyone who's been to law school, Councilwoman Myers, Mr. Reynolds, myself, will tell you, the easy question on the exam is, what's the strongest presumption in Anglo-Saxon jurisprudence? Every man is presumed innocent until proven guilty. So, I think as a council, we have to be careful that we don't prejudge the mayor or anyone else. And everyone's going to say, oh, why, what's the big deal with that? You know, we have opinions. Well, let's talk about the second concept. The second concept is rooted in the issue of fairness, and that applies whether it's a civil case or a criminal case. That's a jury of your peers, a fair and unbiased juror, unbiased jury. And one of the techniques that lawyers use to determine whether or not a jury is biased or not is they ask them certain questions to determine whether they have a predetermined outcome in mind. So, as a council, I believe we have to be careful that we not put ourselves in a position where this outcome has been predetermined, because who knows the destination? But at, but at a certain point, unless I'm sadly mistaken, the mayor is going to seek counsel, and that council's going to push back. One of the classic flaws in a system is if you have an investigation by a biased organization. I mean, that's no investigation at all, subject to challenge on all sorts of levels. Now, the third concept I think we need to keep in mind is this ability to call, confront, and cross-examine witnesses, whether it's a civil case or a criminal case. We've talked about, well, we don't really know this, and we really don't know that. The fact of the matter is, we don't know anything, except what we read in the newspaper that's obviously been planted by people with certain predetermined agendas. What does that really mean? It, it means that I, I can't imagine any situation where an investigation proceeds without a sworn affidavit, a statement, some sort of investigation to go by, so that we know who did what, who said what, when, where, and how. We don't have that. We don't have that. So, sooner or later, people are going to have to come out, they're going to have to raise their right hand, they're going to have to swear out an affidavit of what happened. Otherwise, it's impossible for you to make a decision, because clearly we have two differing versions. We have a mayor who essentially says, look, I was exercising my executive power, I didn't do anything wrong. We have police officers who believe he did something wrong. Well, how do we know unless somebody subjects themselves to the penalties of perjury and gives us an affidavit of the version of the event? Now, last but not least, we have this concept called corpus delecti, which I throw in there with Latin words occasionally to justify my salary, so people think that I'm a learned person. What that means is, we have to figure out, what is the crime? What is the offense? Are we going to have an investigation into a criminal action? If it's a criminal action, then what are the elements that have to be met to show that the mayor committed a crime? If it's going to be a civil offense, it's the same analysis. What are the elements that are going to have to be shown to assert a claim that the mayor committed some sort of civil violation? If it's an ethical violation, you have the same issue. Now, if it's something else, like disrespect or inappropriate behavior, quite frankly, right now, I, I don't know what, how to advise you as to where to go. But it seems to me the bottom line is that, that the first step is to, as, as Councilwoman Pratt, and I think Councilman Townsend, and probably Councilwomen Dewis and Myers have said, and Councilman Wu, somebody has to come up with a statement that can be relied on, on either side, which is the first step to whatever you want to do. Once you have that statement and you consider it, then you say, okay, it's criminal, it's civil, it's ethical, it's a charter violation, here's our plan. But quite frankly, until that happens, I think we're all just sort of punching in the dark on this thing. So, hopefully, we can agree on a plan.
Okay, so, you, you've said criminal, civil, ethical, charter issue. What about just going on a fact-finding mission?
That's what I wanted to say.
Go on a fact-finding mission. It's clear that this body sitting here today, and probably, I can't speak for the next council, but probably it'd be of the same, same mind, would like to put a mechanism in place that affirmatively stops this from happening again. And presumably, whatever action we take could be challenged in court, you know, and that's fine. But I think they're looking to do a fact-finding case, so that if the allegations that, that the FOP have asserted are, are true, that they want to keep that from happening again. So, it's not about guilt or innocence. It, it's just fact-finding is what I'm, I'm hearing. What mechanism could we do to get that first statement? Issue a single subpoena? Right now, I don't even know who to issue the subpoena to.
Let, let me ask this, and I'm not going to put the chief on the spot, but maybe he can weigh in informally later. I, I would suggest this could be much like an inappropriate use of force case on the part of a police officer. There surely must be, I'm not particularly familiar with the internal procedures over at the police department, but surely there's a mechanism for the police department, their internal affairs officers, to conduct and, I mean, it would seem to me that when you have a dispute between police officers and the mayor, that's something the internal affairs department would investigate. And they would talk to the police officers and give the mayor and Mr. Peacock an opportunity to make their statement, and come up with a resolution. I don't know, I, I don't know why this council would want to do it. You're certainly free to do it. I think you could appoint a committee, I don't know if Councilwoman Myers suggested that, two or three people? Clearly, you have the power to do it. What I'm suggesting is, you need to know what you're investigating first, and, and an internal investigation by the police department would, would be a good first step. Or as you suggest, you could do it by yourself. And, and that, that brings up the other issues of who's going to do it, what personnel you're going to use, how you're going to fund it, and all those things that we don't have to deal with right now.
Okay, Dr. Wu, but after this is over with, I need, I need to have somebody pass or kick here. We're coming up on the, end of the second hour on that. Please do, be quick.
I don't often disagree with our learned attorney, but on this one point of internal affairs, and, and the law enforcement officers can correct me if, if I'm wrong, as I view internal affairs, is when somebody within the department has committed something that's wrong. What's at hand now is between a conflict between outside the department and a department. So, starting off with internal affairs, that's, to me, it doesn't seem to make sense, because you're investigating the officers rather than investigating the incident.
Yeah, are you trying to put us under investigation with our internal affairs? I mean, we have no power of the mayor, y'all do, it's subpoena power. I don't understand Mr. Messer's statement with the...
All right, Mr. Townsend.
One thing I think we really need to be specific in, Mr. President, you stated it, and you keep saying the FOP versus the mayor. I, I don't think it's a union complaint that has been submitted. If it is, you need to be specific in that regard. But if it's a group of police officers who were performing their duty, got a complaint, that's distinctly different from having a complaint from the union, and we need to have that clarification.
That's a great point.
This is a fraternal order of police complaint.
So, it is a union complaint?
Okay.
Can I get clarification on that, though? The union is the only body that is allowed to come speak to this council and make a complaint in that form, just like the fire department. Only union can come speak to council on issues unless they're a resident of the city. So, that's not...
I'd like clarification on that.
I'd like clarification, too.
That's significant if it's union.
I don't know they have an opportunity.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they've got a, a redress available to them.
Well, you can't come in here and...
No, that's the only way.
Okay.
Have citizens defend color voice in their opinion.
Okay, all right. How, how are we going to handle this, guys?
Chief wanted to speak.
Chief.
I just didn't know if you wanted some clarification on the internal affairs process. Typically, there's a complaint from the outside, or it can be triggered from the internal. But it's based on complaints on our, our action, the actions of our officers. And it, I don't feel like our internal affairs can, can investigate the, the actions of the mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'm ready.
You're ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, what I've heard here tonight is the greatest concern about interference, the chain of command, the boundaries of how, how they perform their duties, and how they're carried out, and how they're communicated with. If I've learned anything in four years on council, that our inaction and our silence is much more damaging than any action we may flub up and take two hours to determine. So, I am proud of us deliberating this tonight, and we must establish a permanent record of what occurred with this situation. If not, it will fester, it has already undermined the morale in the police department, it has upset this whole council and a great deal of this community. So, it's our job as a legislative branch to, at a minimum, establish what happened that night. So, my motion, there's two motions, because I believe there's two separate things that we need to discuss, is regarding the October 19th, 2012 Gallery Night, council inquire into the actions of Mayor Hayward as to interference with law enforcement, per the union contract with the Pensacola Police Department, bargaining units, and also per state law. That council request a sworn statement from all parties involved to include Mayor Hayward, our chief of police, the sergeant in charge that evening, and the remaining officers, I believe there are 11, 12 in total. That's my motion. We are requesting sworn statements, we are inquiring into this. This isn't a hammer of investigation that may be warranted later on. This is simply saying, we as a council request sworn statements from all parties involved.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, it shouldn't have been second. Yes, ma'am.
I, I do support the motion, but are we going to issue subpoenas to get those statements? Because some people may not want to give us statements. Or, and if we're not, a subpoena protects people, because then they have to come whether they want to or not. It's, it's really a way of protecting people from retaliation, and so I...
Can you add language in there?
Certainly, if I say that council request a sworn statement in the form of a subpoena from all parties involved, and then the ones I enumerated, I believe Councilman Myers has a list of the officers that were on duty that night, as hired by the DIB, that she could make part of the record.
Dr. Pratt, you're okay with that? Okay. All in fact, oh, yes, sir.
Well, it was just one sentence in there that I didn't particularly like, I don't believe. Would you read the motion again?
Regarding the October 19th, 2012 Gallery Night, that council inquire into the actions of Mayor Hayward as to interference with law enforcement, per the union contract with the Pensacola Police Department bargaining units, and Florida state law, that council request a sworn statement in the form of a subpoena from all parties involved, including Mayor Hayward, our chief of police, the sergeant in charge that evening, as well as Mr. Peacock, because he has been named numerous times, and the other officers involved.
Okay, I, I read something else, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Spencer.
The ambiguity there is, still remains for me, and all parties involved.
I just mean the officers, I don't have their names, Councilman, so I'm just saying the remaining officers that were employed that night as off-duty officers. I apologize, I didn't have access to that.
Right, I mean, I didn't know if that could imply...
That's just those.
Other attendees?
No other witnesses.
Because it could grow.
No, just official, official parties involved in it.
Go for a vote. Previous questions been moved, is there a second?
Second.
She said second. We're ready.
Was there a second? No, no, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Myers.
Are we still on the, the main motion?
Well, yeah, we're, we're still on the main motion. Mr. Townsend had wanted to go ahead and vote, you know, in debate, so...
Okay, well, I just want to make it clear that what we're doing is simply fact-finding, and once we get statements from people, I, I think that, I appreciate your legal advice, but I think that you would have made a good law professor, because, I mean, we're getting into many areas that don't really apply to just simply fact-finding. We don't, and, and I just want to make it clear that that's what we're doing at this point, just fact-finding, that's it.
Okay, Dr. Wu? Okay, please vote. Okay, please vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And you have one more.
Yes, and it has to do with the, instead of the apology that was requested or information being sent directly to council, it has to do with the statement the mayor made that the behavior of several officers was unacceptable. So I would like an investigation into Florida State Statute 112.532 and Florida State Statute 112.533 as it relates to the statements of Mayor Hayward on November 2 in a local newspaper. If you want me to remove that, I can just say that simply it is his statement that the behavior of several officers was unacceptable.
Is there a second? Okay. Yes.
I just wanted to state why I did not support that motion is because I believe it's redundant. I think we need to do the fact-finding first, and then we can get into looking at various areas of the law, but right now, we just need to know what happened.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, good. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, council. Again, we're sorry to put you in this position.
Okay, yes.
You didn't. Not you.
Sir, wait, it's already been disposed of.
What?
No, there's a gentleman back there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a one-minute statement if I could. Regarding, I was there that night on gallery night. I'm not here attacking anybody. Ms. Myers, my councilwoman, I spoke with her the other day about this. I was there from about 7:00 PM to about 10:15 PM, and everything I observed, there were no sirens at all. Police were not driving into crowds. The most they had was their blue lights, and they were being very respectful and professional. They were put on the spot to shut down at 9:00 PM, and everyone was like, what's going on? I'm just here to speak up for the officers.
And I do appreciate that, sir.
Yeah, that's just my own point, is the media has been blatant misrepresentation of what the officers did. There were no sirens, no driving quickly. They were idling and respectfully asking people to get on the sidewalk. They're just doing their job. I'm just here to speak up for the officers.
Yes, sir, and that's much appreciated, and I know they appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Good job. Yep, we've got other business here that we're taking care of. Mission of Parks and Recreation Board and ability to bring items to council for consideration. And who was it that had the most interest in this?
What was that again, President Hall? I'm still...
Ms. Myers. Ms. Myers. We're on to the Parks and Recreation Board ability to bring items forward.
Okay, which agenda item is that?
That's Discussion Item 3.
Okay, I have a head... Can you read it to me? Let me look.
Mission of Parks and Recreation Board and ability to bring items to council for consideration. Now, let me suggest to you here, this is one of the great things about having our council executive, is taking this not just on the Park and Recreation Board, and, Dr. Cox, could you come forward, please? I know you're trying to stay in the background, and I appreciate that, but I'd like to have you address specifically what you and I talked about on the phone today with certain boards not meeting since 2008 and doing a review on all those boards.
Mr. President, as she comes up.
Okay, I've got you. Okay. We need to hold up just one moment. I found out it was Ms. DeWes that made that motion. We're on the board, yes. And Dr. Cox and I had had a discussion earlier today to expand this out beyond to other boards.
Right.
Because, quite frankly, need to do a review of all of them. This one is not met since 2008.
Right.
So...
Thank you. And, yeah, there is a larger picture here that needs to be looked at, but the immediate concern would be to start with one. I know that, I'm certain I bored you to death during my tenure as president when I had all the boards come and speak with us and give us updates. But I thought it very valuable to, for us, understand their mission and if they're carrying out what our intended mission is and to hear from them. But what's happened under this new form of government that is a larger picture that needs to be looked at in the months to come is refining mission statements for our boards and our committees that we have, that are established and standing committees, that they align with the needs of the legislative branch, now that there is an executive branch with the staff that is responsible to the executive of the city. So if you'll indulge me, I'd like to ask a member of the Parks and Recreation Board to come share a more detailed summary of what the concern is at this point, so we can start talking about this one board. Since I will be departing from council, I think it would be good to hear from him to be able to relay back and forth with and continue the process. It's Mr. John Myslick.
Mr. Myslick.
And I'd like to apologize to him. I rushed him here when CRA was lightning-fast today. So I think you lost an hour of work, and I am truly sorry.
Mr. President, council members, thank you for having me, but I have to do a quick drive-by. I've got to pick my daughter up from ballet, so I apologize, but you're dealing with much more important things than Parks and Rec and how we interact with city council and staff. Really, the larger issue, and the reason this came up is in our last Parks and Rec meeting, and I'll just dive right in if that's okay, was we got to talking about, we reread the mission that's published on the city website, and our chairman recommended, he gave us an idea of a new mission, kind of changing it a little bit and updating it, which is great, and I think that's a great idea, and I think the mission does need to be reviewed and updated. However, my comment at the time was, I don't think that's our place to tell you what our mission should be. I think, city council, we work for you guys, and I think Ms. DeWes hit it right on the head, is with the new form of government, I think there's a bit of a learning curve as to how these council volunteers or appointees or employees or whatever you want to call us, get information back to the council. Historically, it's been where, at least for Parks and Rec, my understanding is that recommendations that we want to get to the council agenda go through staff and then get placed on agenda. I think that, given the separation of powers now between executive and legislative branch, and now that you have Dr. Cox, it may be more appropriate for recommendations to be compiled from our board to go through Dr. Cox to be set on your agenda rather than going through staff. And it kind of got brought to a head in terms of, you know, wanting to do more. We want to, we're here as a resource for y'all to help you set policy in terms of managing the city. You know, I didn't volunteer my time on that board to be a potted plant. I want to do something. And part of that doing something, and I have to give great credit to the mayor and executive staff in realizing the desperate need for a formal MOU to handle various groups that are using city facilities. I think that was a long time in coming, and I give great credit to Mr. Reynolds and other staff members for putting that together. And operationally, staff needs to get those groups to fill these things out. That's part of the operational duty, I think, at that level. But then there's a big question as to, how are those MOUs reviewed? Are they reviewed, or should they be reviewed? My contention is that there should be a standing committee within Parks and Rec Citizen Advisory Board that reviews those MOUs and then reports to city council as to what the relationship then should be with those outside agencies seeking funding or in-kind services. Are they meeting the standards and requirements that you all set forth in terms of maximizing the benefit to the citizens for the value of the services they're getting? I don't know if that's clear, but I think the intent there is if you're going to ask for all this documentation, financials, bylaws, rules, board makeup, et cetera, something needs to be done with it. Operationally, staff will have done their part once they get these organizations to fill that out. But from a policy perspective, that has to fall on you guys, is, would be my understanding, and you guys need some mechanism by which to review that information. We should be that mechanism. We're here to help you do that. So that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I can stay for another 30 seconds.
Dr. Wu?
If I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that the information you get then will be channeled through the council through Dr. Cox?
Yeah, what I'm saying, Dr. Wu, is I don't know how it should work.
Right.
I'm saying, and this is not an indictment on anybody or anything, this is simply a question of, how do we all work together to make it work? And it doesn't need to be, oh, we're the council-appointed board, we can't interact with staff. That is absolutely not where I would go with it.
Right.
It's got to be, we're there to help staff also in performing their function.
Right, and excuse me for interrupting. I'm trying to get you to your pickup there. My question is simply then, why not involve both? In other words, if you give information to Dr. Cox, at the same time provide information to Bill Reynolds, and therefore, you're taking care of both branches?
Well, staff is in our meetings, so, I mean, we fulfill that portion of that function with them participating in our meetings, and we get very important information from them. But now, what Dr. Cox now is the new element, which is great, and I think ultimately, that's going to be a great resource for you guys. I see it kind of evolving now, taking shape based on the structure of the new charter.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just going to come down this way and around.
Yes, I just want to thank Mr. Myslick for all the good work he does. I'm looking forward to seeing your kids again in the park soon playing baseball. I'm so glad you brought this issue up because it's been an issue I've been concerned about for a long time. Under the charter, only the city council can set up boards, commission, and authorities, and those should reflect the legislative policies of the city council. But it bothers me that I really don't know what most of our boards are doing. And you bring up a very good point, that I think the purpose of our boards is to bring ideas to us in terms of policy and procedures and how we can improve the overall functioning of the city. This comes up at a good time because the Environmental Advisory Board has been meeting for a number of months, and they're going to be bringing ideas to the city council about how, what they're doing and some ideas about how to develop policies, environmental policies for the city. So what I would like to suggest is that maybe you could get together with Dr. Cox and Mr. Reynolds and work out a template for doing this, for this board, and it could be kind of a template for how we, for the other boards, instead of just attacking all of them at one time. But I do like the idea of your ideas, the board's ideas coming through Dr. Cox. She is the contact person, and that's why she was hired, to do just the sort of thing that you're suggesting. So I think that if, maybe we could ask Mr. Myslick if he could work with Dr. Cox, bring us something that we could look at in terms of procedure, and we could put it on the next committee of the whole.
I'd be happy to do that if so directed by council.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I did want to make one statement, just to make sure I'm clear.
And, Mr. President, I'd like to chime in on this issue as well. Okay.
So I wanted to clarify, because if council remember how we used to do outside agencies, and we had the larger funds that we funded directly, and then we had United Way, that we trusted with maybe a dozen or even more than that smaller agencies. So I don't think it's a wholesale request of every MOU that Parks and Recreation does comes to the Parks and Rec Board. I think what's intended is some of the league play that is, you know, the smaller things that are going on, some of the special events, that sort of thing. And I don't remember the MOU specifically. Mr. Reynolds can probably clarify. So it's not a complete, you know, altering of what's been going on. I think it's just saying that we need someone involved to ensure our policies are being carried out, and it's to the benefit of the citizens.
Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. President, thank you very much, and thank you, city council members. What you've witnessed is what I like to refer to as an end around. And let me explain that to you.
Is it what?
An end around.
Oh, okay.
And let me explain that. Essentially, what we have is an action that, in regards to the MOUs, that I'm sure that you are all familiar with, where I specifically determined that we needed to have MOUs in the organizations with our user groups. Never happened before. As we are putting together the MOUs, Councilwoman DeWes had some problems with the way we were implementing them. I told her at that time that we essentially were, that this was an operational issue, this was not a council issue, and that we were going to move forward with a particular set of MOUs. She did not like that very much, and actually, that same day lodged a complaint against me in regards to an open meetings violation. So, a sunshine violation, excuse me. Since that point, you know, the Park and Recs Board is an advisory body on policy issues to this council. That's what it does. When it comes to day-to-day operations, the charter is very clear, that's my purview. My purview and my charge there is to take your policies and implement them. But by creating a, and as Councilwoman DeWes has noted in her comments, she doesn't want to look at everything, she only wants to look at those particular pieces that she disagrees with and has to do with Bill Bond's baseball.
That is out of order, the point of order. That is completely out of line.
Yeah, let's stay away from that. Stay on the complete policy side.
So the bottom line is, is that when it comes to operational issues, that's the purview and of, frankly, me, and I will do everything I can to take those policy issues that you develop and ensure they're appropriately applied to this organization. But to conduct an end around because someone's not comfortable or not happy with my particular decisions in the past is, in my opinion, inappropriate.
May I respond, please?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. President. That entire side swipe or T-bone, no, I'm just, I'm shocked, so I need to take a minute to get myself together because that was incredibly inappropriate. This came out of a concern that has happened over my four years on council, and I have very professionally and respectfully asked questions of the Parks and Recreation Director at the time. This was ongoing. The characterization of me not liking an MOU and not wanting it to happen is absolutely ridiculous. I will tell this council that my greatest concern was how it was going to impact the users of our parks and the people in our community. It is a long and very detailed document that has been developed. Greatest concern and the reason this even came to fruition was the users of our league play have access to that league, meaning two simple statements on every application for league play within our city. Not to overthink this. So when I made my statements of, why do we need an 18-page document when this can be accomplished with two simple statements on every form we give a citizen, I am concerned with policy at that point because that is a new policy, although internal, that is affecting our league play. There are users of our parks and league play in football that cannot afford some of the implementations of this new MOU. It's $30 more per child for football. It's $20 more per child for other sporting endeavors. It's a huge impact on the citizens, and that is our business. So my only concern, I did not even have a copy of this MOU or even know the detail that was in it. I simply said, we need to be aware of how this is impacting the citizens. So that was a complete mischaracterization. My representation of this and my concern of this was a constituent that contacted me. Nothing more. This is not an out-and-around or in-and-around or around-your-elbow. That was so unprofessional, and I'm disappointed that it's been characterized that way. What we have to look at is, we have policies as our city council. We have committee members and board members that we appoint and we vote on, and they have a mission in place. That mission must align with the new form of government. It has less to do with this MOU and more to do with that big picture. This is simply the first board member that has taken the initiative to come forward and say, hey, this is a little bit out of whack here. It's not in balance between the executive and the legislative branch. There are things that should be reported to council and not through staff back to council on the mayor's agenda. We've had that deliberation on many things, is what would be part of our agenda, what would be part of the mayor's agenda. So this is not some game being played. I step off of council this week. It's not what I want to see and what I have a problem with. I personally have resolved my, any situations I may have. My representation on council was, what are we doing as a policy? I think it deserves an apol... I think it deserves an apology from Mr. Reynolds. I do not have the opportunity to sit and speak to him like that in public. This is the official record of the City of Pensacola, and that was downright disgusting.
Okay, and thank you. And I apologize to you for letting it go on. It was veering in between the policy decision and the personal, I should have never let it have gotten personal.
Thank you for your apology, Mr. President.
And for those watching, that's part of what the Roberts Rules of Order is about. If I miss something, there's a mechanism where somebody can call me on that, and just raise a point of order. So I want to thank you for that. Ms. Dubuson, I see you wanting to speak, but I'm going to come around here, and Dr. Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, on the most recent exchange, I think that we have to decide as a council, what are our policies? I believe our policies can be anywhere from do-good things, to when someone wears a pink hat, they get to get in for free, to something. I mean, I think we can, policies at whatever level, and so if we decide, and I don't know anything about this stuff, my kids were not sports kind of kids, so I don't know what's going on, it sounds like there's some weird stuff, but I think that it is important for us to hear from the boards, and Mr. Myslik, as a citizen, has every right to approach us. I do think, though, that we have to look at it a little broader as well, in that it's actually, back when I suggested we needed council staff, one of my suggestions was, how do we handle those committees that need to be reporting to us? I think there are committees that might be more appropriate in the administrative side, but I think there are a number of committees that need to have a way to reach the council without going through the administration necessarily. You know, we often have a planning board, we'll have one recommendation, the administration has another, and that's a perfectly valid way for it to go. And so do we have that kind of procedure for our other boards, if there's some questions on that? And so you had mentioned bringing Dr. Cox up to talk about boards more broadly, and I think that that is an important thing. I had asked when this came up, I said, hey, you know, I know like the enterprise zone hasn't met forever, and do we have to have it, what are the rules? And so I think that examining our boards more broadly, and how they interface with the council as our boards versus what we need to have for the administration to have boards that really deal with more mundane issues, or things that if the mayor would like to have a board, you know. And I know the charter says that the council appoints members of committees, it seems the mayor feels like if he wants a board, he can circumvent that part of the charter, but I think that that should be a question. Are these our boards, and if so, how do they interface with us? Because I never hear about the Parks and Rec Board. So I think that that's a broader question, and so I look forward to Mr. Myslik and Dr. Cox working through, thinking about things that might be more appropriate, coming to the council, and then a broader discussion. Thank you.
Before I call Ms. Dubuson up, either one of you, no, Ms. Dubuson.
Mr. President, there's not a motion on the floor. We voted, though. I mean, we're going to spend hours on this.
Yeah, I know, and please, okay, I move that we discuss the broader.
No, it's okay, I just, if we're going to get into our opinions, let's go.
Okay, yeah.
We've got a long agenda here.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Reese, I apologize for 30 seconds.
It's not you, it's Ms. Dubuson, sir.
I just want to remind council that this issue was brought to you prior to Mr. Reynolds' and the MOU issue, because there were quite a few council committees who were not meeting, and it was repeatedly asked, who gets to call the meetings, and is it staff-driven, or is it committee-driven? I do attend the Parks and Rec Committee meetings, and I was present when this whole MOU conversation came up, and it did come up because citizens came to the committee and were told that the mayor would be developing a policy. And at that point, the committee was suggested that they would actually dissolve themselves and become a fundraising entity. So I believe that it is important that council, through Dr. Cox or whatever method you set up, does look at, what is the role of the council committees that are still in existence, and incidentally, how does staff impact them? Because if it is a council committee, does staff tell this council committee, you do not meet, if they don't feel like meeting, when the council committee maybe has an agenda that they would like to work on? So all of those issues have been brought up to you before, and I would encourage you to take action to resolve it. Thank you.
Dr. Pratt, do you have a motion there that you'd like to make?
No, I apologize for speaking on a non-agenda, like, or non-vote.
Okay. Dr. Cox, I apologize, but you look good sitting there, so. All right, funding for the Complete Streets Workshop.
I will field it at the beginning.
Would need a motion.
Oh. All right, there's the recommendation that the city council appropriate 10,000.
It was, the motion was made, wasn't it, or discussion?
Well, I think the committee asked for this to come to us. So there's, I wrote it up, that it says the recommendation that the city council appropriate 10,000 for workshops on Complete Streets.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
And just to make this short, I don't know why we need to really, we can go back to the Complete Street Committee, we meet on Friday and discuss how to use that $10,000, but I don't know why we need to take up time doing that right now. I mean, our main objective was, I think, to get the money.
I would suggest, though, that council members should consider not just throwing money at a committee without knowing, and I can give you briefly what the request was. There is a National Complete Streets Coalition that will do special workshops to help draft policies and ordinances. I'm going to say that I wasn't really intending to be making that motion, I have some reservations about putting that money there. I voted in the committee to support it, because I also thought there was an alternative need of having possibly the West Florida Regional Planning Council provide workshops, but I've spoken with Mr. Reynolds, and he said that the city staff would be able to do the public workshops. And so I'm, at this point, I don't know that I'm supportive of appropriating these funds for this use, because I believe we have a policy in place. It might not be perfect, but I think it gets us where we need to be, so that we can have this committee and the plan, and so I don't know that that money needs to be spent, so.
Well, I withdraw my second then. No, I was just being accommodating. If Mr. Reynolds says staff, and we certainly have very capable staff, I see no reason to take the money.
Okay.
Use it for that purpose.
Well, that's what she was, and I counted that as a motion. Okay, so the motion's now out of order, all right? All right, so, Mr. Reynolds.
Are we moving on now, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is, subject funding for the West Florida Public Library System. The recommendation is that city council adopt an ordinance authorizing Escambia County to levy a municipal service taxing unit, MSTU, within the incorporated area upon the adoption by Escambia County to levy a MSTU within the unincorporated area for a dedicated funding source for the West Florida Public Library System.
Well, Mr. Reynolds can't make a motion.
No, no, he gave the recommendation.
Okay.
On staff, Dr. Wu moved to approve. Now we need a second.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
And at this point, Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to kind of go through a presentation, and, you know, if you'll remember at our last discussion, we talked about we were still working some things out, and at this point, I'd like to go ahead and inform the council some of those things that we have worked out, and go from there.
Okay, great.
And in order, at the very beginning, I have to say, we owe a great debt of gratitude to the county who put this presentation together, and frankly, I reviewed it, and there's nothing I could add. It was an extremely good presentation, so I'll go through it at this time. As you understand currently, the library system is governed and funded through an interlocal agreement between us and the county. It has been around for some time, but has, the one that we're currently dealing with has been in place since 2001, and I believe at that point, it was modified to a degree at the county's request in determining how overhead was going to be applied to the formula. This agreement essentially describes a formula, outlines a formula of how we're going to fund the system. And, you know, as we traditionally look at this, over time, initially, the city used to have more funding part of it, of the system, because we, our citizens, were using it more. But over time, that has clearly shifted, to the point where we're looking at it currently, about 72%, 73% of the system is funded by the county. Now, this does not include, the Molino branch, which will be coming online, and will, which will up that percentage considerably. As you know, from our prior discussions, not to beat a dead horse, but we had some issues, we had to make some reductions based upon those issues, and essentially had to cut some hours in the system. As I told you at our last meeting on the special community of the whole meeting for the library issue, we have a short-term problem to deal with and a long-term problem to deal with. The short-term problem is that we have way too less funding for way too many hours, and way too many people who are upset the fact that we don't have those hours available. We have a short-term solution, and as I told you last time, essentially that is to take the carryover, which is both city and county funding of $355,000, plug that into this year's system budget, which will bring us up to 87% of what we had previously, and will give us 40% of, excuse me, 40 hours at the Molino facility, which was not brought into the system. So the county had brought this to their committee of the whole meeting on the 8th of November, they were in favor of this and voted for it. What I would like to see is that this particular body, recognizing that this will come to you in December, and a good-faith effort, and to give our friends at the county a warm and fuzzy, if you will, that we intend to move forward with this, I would request that we go ahead and make a decision to commit that funding to this next year's budget. And I would love for a motion to come forward.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. We really need discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously.
Thank you. So we have essentially taken care of our short-term problem. Now let's talk about our long-term problem. I'm going to forward through some of these, these gets us, okay. So going forward. Essentially, as we've had discussions with the county, we recognize, for whatever reason, the current interlocal doesn't work. So we have to find a way to make sure that we move forward and establish something that will work. We have been in discussions with the county, as you are aware, for establishing the MSTU for library services. It would fund the entire library system and eliminate the need for any funding formula. So in other words, it doesn't matter if you're from the city or the county, when you come and get your library card, you know, we don't even have to determine where you're from, and it has no effect on the overall funding of the system. Essentially, that requirement is that, you know, we would have to authorize the imposition of the MSTU within the city limits. Currently, it is specifically excluding the city limits of Pensacola. The millage rate would be set to cover 100% of that, of the library system's costs, and the first year, we would take that cost, plug it in, and then offset, both at the county and the city, the effect of it on our millage rate. So in effect, there is no new taxes here. All we're doing is setting aside some money specifically for the system. In the future, the MSTU rate would be set to cover 100% of the cost of the system as a whole. And if it was to be imposed next year, and one of the reasons that I asked for you to take a look at it at this point, and look at what we need to do relatively quickly here as well, is that we have a 31-December timeline we need to move forward with in order to make this happen. Yes, sir?
For the viewing audience, you said something that was very essential, and I don't know if people heard that, and that was, if I could get you to repeat the part that there is no additional taxes.
No new taxes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Essentially, what we're doing is we're offsetting, both the county and the city will offset their required or budgeted numbers under this MSTU, to then, against their millage rate.
Thank you, sir.
Could you go back just one slide?
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm going to guess that terminate the current interlocal agreement actually will go at the bottom of many of these, that we don't terminate the agreement until we have the other stuff.
Yes, sir, we have to have some way to fund the system, so until we have, although our intent is to move forward and do it, I think it's only prudent that we make that decision once we have everything else in place, correct?
Yes, Ms. DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have a question on the MSTUs. In the memorandum, it talks about the first year being tax and revenue neutral, but it's not very clear in the years following, if we could have clarification on that, to understand the impact in following years after year one.
I'd like to take that one on. Every year, you adjust your millage rate or keep it the same, so the fact that it wouldn't have an impact the first year, if you could adjust the overall millage rate in subsequent years, even if it's five years down the road, and I'm guessing, Mr. Reynolds, part of, just tag on to Mr. DeWes's question, that you could adjust the individual MSTU itself, and do it either as a millage increase or revenue neutral in any given year?
Yes, sir, and that will have the same effect as any other decrease or increase of the millage rate, you know, the normal processes in place would have to be followed for that. And that would be handled at the county level, but certainly, you know, there may be a time where the citizens decide that they're willing to fund it more, there may be times where the citizens decide that they want less of a funding, but it goes under the same concept as we do with any other millage increases or decreases.
I'll take care of you, Ms. DeWes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As we look at going forward, and this is not yet in front of you, this is just an outline of where we see things going, and please understand, this may change, but you know, this is based upon what we've been discussing at this point. As I stated earlier, you've had a tremendous shift, and the shift will continue in regards to who uses this system, whether they're city residents or county residents. And one of the essential parts of this discussion has been, you know, I guess, a reality check. Why is the city managing something that it has a continuing decreased interest in, and why are they city employees? It certainly made sense at one time, but as we continue to move forward, and as we look at the extrapolation of usage into the future, you know, it seems to make less and less more sense. So.
And I know what you meant to say was city and non-city residents, because city residents are county residents.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So as we were discussing in our meeting with the county, we would like to see a five-person advisory committee, and it's actually, it's more than an advisory committee, it's essentially a governmental body that would answer to the county, take control of the system, and make determinations as to the future usage of the system, and everything else that might normally be done by a manager of that particular organization. Three of those would be appointed by the county, and two appointed by the city. And again, that would, I think, is a fair reflection of the usage of the system itself. And then obviously, since it would be a county-run system, the Board of County Commissioners would then have the final decision on these recommendations. We aren't looking to transfer any physical assets to the county, we would still own our The talk, or the concept at this point is, is that these, obviously, the current city employees would transfer over into the county. And also, another important point is that our LOST funds would stay with the individual organizations to which they've been charged. That is generally both the short-term, long-term, the MSTU issue that brings us here today, and kind of a snapshot of what we see going into the future, and I'm here to answer questions, Ms. Howell's here to answer questions, we have representatives from the county to answer questions, and... county to answer questions, and, so I'll be more than happy to move forward at this point.
What, does this have to come out in an ordinance form?
Yes, sir. The MSTU itself will be in ordinance, it's actually attached to our item here today.
Okay, well, um...
Which, and I'm sorry, which obviously means that we're going to need multiple sessions to...
That, that's right. I, you know, you know, I was initially thought, I'd just rather push this off onto the next council, but seeing that we've got to do it on December thirty-first, I don't mind taking the vote on it today to, to, to move it forward and let them finish it up if they so desire. So, Ms. Myers.
I'll make a motion that we proceed with asking the city attorney to draft the appropriate ordinance.
We, we've got what we need right here.
Are we doing it?
And their motion's already been made.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just, I'm really excited about this. I think this is a great direction to be heading. I just wanted to make sure I know where all the numbers are. Mr. Reynolds, the MSTU will be one number countywide, so if somebody in Century is going to pay point something mills, we're going to pay that point something mills to the, so there's not a separate city one.
That is correct.
And then, in your comments, I, I noted this, but maybe it was just a, just a throwaway word, you said it would, the MSTU would ultimately cover one-hundred percent of the library. The plan is that immediately it will cover one-hundred percent.
It will. No, absolutely. Once it's enacted, it will, it will, it will cover all the expenses for the library system.
Okay. So, I guess my question, it, the way I look at it, it's a great benefit for the city residents, but I think the county residents would have to know that, that their taxes would probably have to go up. If they've been paying out of their, their general fund seventy-two percent of the library costs, and now this MSTU is going to cover one-hundred percent, then, then either they're just going to cut their general fund revenue by that extra percentage that the city's been paying, or, you know, it, it's just, and I, and I would think that if that, if one-hundred percent of it's coming out of the, the county general fund, then the city residents will see a, a extra decrease, as, because as Council, Council President Hall, I, I think in perpetuity, anytime this comes up, I will say, in honor of Councilman Hall's comments, we've been paying twice. So county-wide, it's, it's going to be a decrease for the city residents and an increase for the county. That's how I see the math. Is there some math that I didn't see? If the county's been paying seventy-two percent, and now the county as a whole is going to pay one-hundred percent, somewhere that difference...
This is something that we shouldn't bring up, okay?
Okay.
Well, no, but, but...
Erase.
Yeah, we shouldn't bring this up.
I just want to make sure we know what we're getting into.
Although, I'm a little confused, but, but let me put it this way. It's now funded one-hundred percent by residents of the city and the county.
Right.
It will be funded one-hundred percent by the citizens of the city and the county, excuse me, President Hall, those residents of, of the, of the county that do not reside in the city limits.
Yes, but the city residents have been paying twice for the, for the, the privilege of the library, and the county residents have only paid once, so we're paying a larger percentage, and with this, we're going to all pay an equal percentage. But I just wanted to get that out there, that I would imagine, it'll be interesting to see how the number far.
Yeah. And I, I hope nobody from outside of the city is listening to this.
I have one other thing that I'd like to make sure gets, gets addressed, is, I'm curious ultimately what the effect on our CRA will be, whether, because if we reduce millage rates for the city and county ad valorem taxes, I don't imagine MSTUs would stay in the CRA. So I just, I hope that somewhere we'll have that little factoid. It's a good thing, I'm just, I just want to know, make us, make sure we all know what the impact across all our budgets will be. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. Item number six, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number six is subject supplemental budget resolution. Recommendation is that city council approve the resolution amending the fiscal year 2012 budget retroactive to September thirtieth, 2012.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Item seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item seven, subject FY 2013 encumbrance carryover budget resolution. The recommendation is that city council approve the resolution amending the fiscal year 2013 budget.
Move to approval.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
I'm going to skip over number eight and nine, because quite frankly, I never know how long these, these things are going to take.
He's in the audience, and he's got to go.
Okay, you got to, okay. Well, all right, I'm sorry. I saw Mr. McQueen sitting down here, and I was trying to go, go to him, because sometimes these can take quite long, so, okay, go ahead. Number eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number eight is subject code enforcement authority request for lien reduction, 2050 Galt Road, case number zero-nine, tac 120. The recommendation is that city council approve a recommendation from the special magistrate to reduce the recorded lien against the property located at 2050 Galt Road, and authorize the mayor to execute the appropriate documents.
Move to approve. Discussion? Questions? Public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's great. Passes unanimously. All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number nine is subject code enforcement authority request for lien reduction, 2301 West Navy Boulevard, case number zero-nine, tac 126. The recommendation is that city council approve a recommendation from the special magistrate to reduce the recorded lien against the property located at 2301 West Navy Boulevard, and authorize the mayor to execute the appropriate documents.
Move to approval.
Second.
Motion's in order. Discussion? Public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number ten.
Mr. President, item number ten is subject award of bid number twelve, tac zero-five-five, 12th Avenue Turn Lane at Francis Taylor Boulevard, Pensacola International Airport. The recommendation is that city council award a contract to Gulf Atlantic Constructors Incorporated, the lowest and most responsible bid in the amount of $72,185 plus a 10% contingency for the construction of the 12th Avenue Turn Lane at Francis Taylor Boulevard Pensacola International Airport project.
Move to approval.
Second. Discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question to refresh my memory on contingencies. This is a 10% contingency, obviously, as the dollar amounts on some of these contracts get quite large, 10% is much larger. What, is there a threshold for 10%, 5%? Is it different types of projects? If I could get clarification, please.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. The clarification is, is that frankly, there are times when our budgets will allow a 10%, and there are other times we know that we don't have that luxury. But regardless, and as I've stated before, all of these, every, every change order that is signed off upon is, is personally reviewed by me, and if there is no reason to authorize it, I will not authorize it. If it is a necessary part of the project and has been through the appropriate channels, then, then, then it will be approved. There, there are some that are not approved. But to answer the, the question of the councilwoman, it, you know, for example, such as our construction, I believe Legion Field is 5%, and that's because of the tightness of the overall budget, and it, but the effect of it from my perspective is not, not, not in, in, in issue simply because of the way I manage it.
So, I'm just trying to understand 10%. It's, I mean, in this case, there's an opportunity for it because the budget will allow it, but, you know, if, when the request is sent out, there is 10% established or 5% on other projects, how is that determination made? Is it because you already have the, the estimates and ideas in mind, or, or how is the decision made for 10%?
Please.
I think Mr. Owens would like to speak...
It's certainly a case-by-case basis, and, and, you know, Mr. Owens can come up here and address it, but one thing I would like to say, if, if this body determines that it wants a 5%, you know, make it happen. I mean, you know, we can certainly work within those parameters. You know, there's always a contingency, because there are unseen circumstances in most projects, and, you know, but that ultimately is a determination of this body. Mr. Owens.
Mr. President, the, the contingency is, is, if you look back through the projects that we do over and over and over, the 10, 10% is kind of a standard we use, and like Mr. Reynolds said, it's, it's to address unforeseen, potential unforeseen conditions. Just because the contingency is in there does not mean we use it. On typical projects, we bring them in less than 5% of the contingency, but it's good to have it there, because if we don't have it there, if we get into an unforeseen condition, the project has to immediately stop. We have to come back to you to get permission for more contingency. So that's why it's in there. We don't, if we don't use it, we absolutely do not.
That brings up one more question, and I hate to belabor the point then. So if 10% is not used, where does that money go immediately? Is it back into the general fund, not to be spent? Is it rounded up and put on another project? I know when we had the Blunt School coming down, this wasn't that same situation, but there were dollars left from other projects, they pooled together to make that one work. How, does it come back to city council?
I see what you're concerned about.
For the contingencies?
I didn't know where you were going with this.
The unused contingency funds, where do they go?
Yeah, I got you.
So if he can answer that, or maybe some, Mr. Barker?
Yeah.
Since this is an airport project...
This is an airport project.
Ms. Crawford can address that?
In this situation, we borrowed funds to do some improvements to our sidewalks, our parking lot, our existing parking lot, and existing parking garage. That will feed over to those projects.
Will that come back to council?
Oh, yes. Every project comes back to council.
And it's shown where it comes from. I'm just looking for a paper trail.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and I thought I knew where you were going, going with it, but, yeah, so, anyway.
I got part of an answer for you.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other discussion? The public? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Lease renewal.
Mr. President, item number eleven is subject lease renewal Bank of America ATM. The recommendation is that city council approve the third amendment to the ATM facility lease agreement between Bank of America and the City of Pensacola, granting a five-year extension, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Item twelve.
Mr. President, item twelve is city technology infrastructure replacement. The recommendation is that city council approve a capital lease with Dell Financial Services for the replacement of mission-critical networking infrastructure and system-wide data backup, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to complete the transaction. Further, that the city use only non-ad valorem revenues for the capital lease payments.
Move to approve. Second. Discussion? Questions? Public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Deferred Retirement Option Plan.
Mr. President, the next item is subject Deferred Retirement Option Plan Drop Ordinance Amendments. The recommendation is that city council approve the ordinance amending the Deferred Retirement Option Plan Drop. The effective date of the change is October first, 2012.
Move to approval.
Second. Motion and a second? Discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last line of our summary says the ordinance also changes the term Director of Finance to Chief Financial Officer to agree with the current position title. I would like clarification on that and its impact, because the decision to change the title, obviously, is our mayor's decision, but that logic of that, and accountability, and any impact it may have on the ordinances that we have in place, was not expressed to us when this change was made. If I could have clarification on that, please.
Mr. Barker? You've been very inconspicuous today.
He hadn't been here.
I actually have been upstairs listening diligently and working on other issues, since the, and then came down when these issues came out, Mr. President. But for this issue, Mr. President, members of the city council, this is simply in compliance with the charter, which gives the mayor the authority to set titles and positions and that type of thing, how, how they are, and in a sense, we were dealing with this ordinance, we noticed that the old title Director of Finance was in here. We're changing it to Chief Financial Officer, which is the current title that the mayor has given to me in my position, and, and it's just a cleanup item. As we, as other ordinance come forward and titles are, are different than they are now, we'll just clean them up at that time. It has no major impact.
Please stay close, Ms....
Yeah, I just needed clarification on the why of that. When, when that change was made, this is the first opportunity council has had to discuss that, and I just want to understand, for the record, for the citizens, I'm not going to be here after next week, the Director of Finance was changed to Chief Financial Officer. What decision-making mechanism was used, or why was it changed?
The mayor determined that that was more representative of the position that I would be holding versus the Director of Finance, and they changed it to Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I, I got Ms. Myers first, Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
Yes, are, are you the, the head of a department?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're changing the name of a department from Director of Finance to Chief Financial Officer, but it's, what is it, the Department of Finance?
It's the Department of Financial Services, it's senior budget, and has been that for the last several years.
Okay.
So you're a department head?
I'm a department director, yes. Department head, department director.
Okay. Just for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm considering withdrawing my second, because I really, this whole thing with directors and, you know, chiefs and administrators and, you know, I wonder if it's just a, a way to get around us approving directors, and I, you know, I'm glad that Councilwoman Dweez brought that up. I, I think that we need to remove that. I'll go along with this. Can I amend my, I guess I can't amend my second? Okay, I'll withdraw my motion, my second, then.
You can suggest an amendment.
I would suggest that we withdraw that, and then I can support that, the maker of the motion.
Draw the changes of the term Director of Finance to Chief Financial Officer, and I'll, I'll accept that.
I'll second that.
Mr. President, it makes...
Whoa, 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 wait, wait, wait a minute. Okay. Now, who made the original motion?
I did.
Okay, and who had seconded?
I did.
Okay. And, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I will, I will take the friendly amendment suggestion, and, and my motion stands with that change. And then, Mr. Spencer's...
And does the second or... And please state your friendly amendment.
It's, it's keeping the phrase Director of Finance in, instead of the changes to Chief Financial Officer.
Yes, I do. Okay. Sorry. I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure... What all that, I, I think the main thing that we're trying to find out if he was department head or not, so, and I'm not sure that, that the name change has a whole lot to... Yes, ma'am. If it moves us forward.
Yeah, well, I will support it with keeping the Director of Finance. I would not support it either if the name Chief Financial Officer is inserted in the ordinance.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Barker's title is Chief Financial Officer. This is, this is a time where we can fix the, the, the language of, of this particular Whether you call it a, a Chief Financial Officer or a, a Director of Finance, it's the same person, the same job. Essentially, Mr. Barker has confirmed to this body that he's a, a department head. The bottom line is, is that the effect of the motion is no effect, absent...
A lot, I, I, I understand that, and I could support it either way. In fact, I'm the one that probably threw us off track, is, I just wanted to know, it the one that probably threw us off track. Yes, I just wanted to know, it sounded like he was a department head, and I hadn't heard that term used in two years, so I was just trying to get that on record. But I'll support it either way. Okay. Any more discussion needed on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda is subject property acquisition X-2424 Campus Heights subdivision. The recommendation is that City Council authorize the purchase of parcel X-2424, parcel ID number 14-TAC-1S-TAC-29-TAC-2200-TAC-050-TAC-003, in the amount of $530,000 plus $20,000 for moving costs, reestablishment, incidentals, other payments in accordance with federal relocation guidelines, plus $10,810 for closing miscellaneous costs and legal fees, plus a five percent contingency in the amount of $28,040.50 for a total authorization of $588,850.50.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Yes, can I, can I ask who the seller of this property is? Maybe I'm overlooking it here.
Typically, Councilman Johnson, we refer to these as parcel numbers rather than to discuss the actual sellers. If you would like, I can present you with the appraisals.
So can you give me the name of the seller? I'm just curious. Is that, is public record?
In this case, it would be, in this case, it would be AE New.
AE New, N-E-W?
N-E-W.
Is that the contractor we do a lot of business with, with the city? We do different projects, Mr. Reynolds? I'm just curious if it's the same one.
May I?
Please.
We do not do a lot of projects with them. Currently, they are assisting us with a project to put covering over some of our ticket spitters in our public parking lot at the airport. But typically, the airport does not do a lot of business with them. Does the city do it?
Yeah, maybe I can help elaborate further on that, Mr. President. Aside from the airport, to my knowledge, AE New is, is the current contractor on the downtown library, and they're also the contractor that was the low bid for Legion Field that's being proposed for Ward of Bid.
No, 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 no. There's two people in front of you. I apologize. Mr. Johnson's.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. DeWes.
I would just like to request, as a part of the official record, that the settlement statements, once prepared and official for the closings, be part of the document for the citizens to see.
Okay. Who made the motion on that?
I did.
I'll second it.
Okay, so you're, okay. All right.
I was going to say that in the future, I would like to know the name of the seller and the closing documents also. I, I think those, there's no reason for that information not to be given to council. And so in the future, I won't support any more purchases for air, the Airport Commerce Park unless that information is given to council before our committee of the whole, whenever it comes up on the agenda.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Spencer.
I want to state, I have not had any sort of business with Mr. AE New for maybe 20 years or, but I, Mr. Johnson's or Councilman Johnson's inquiry compelled me to remind everyone that, to the best of my knowledge, Mr. News has a company, General Construction Company. Almost all of these sort of publicly funded projects are awarded based on a low bid, competitive bid process, and the fact that Mr. New has property and also has successfully earned the opportunity to construct publicly funded projects, I have no problem with that.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that. You know, that brings, you know, I do, who did the appraisal on this property? You know, that, that is an interesting, you know, issue. Do you know who did the appraisal on this?
Not right off the top of my head, I don't, but I can provide you with the appraisals. I would just like to remind you that this is part of the acquisition program. We've identified 65 acres. Your staff does not deal directly with these individuals. We use a relocation specialist. As I mentioned a while ago, I wasn't even aware of what companies or what jobs this individual has done for the city.
So you're saying that the recent hire that we made with Ms. Mitchell, she doesn't hire, she doesn't handle acquisitions for this Airport Commerce Park?
She handles orders, some of the appraisals, but most of this is done by a Part 24 federal relocation project, and we do have a consultant that assists us with this project.
So then Ms. Mitchell did not choose the appraiser on this?
I'm not quite sure if this appraisal, this appraisal's been ordered for quite some time, so it probably was pre-Ms. Mitchell.
You know, that's another thing I think Ms. Myers kind of touched on. It, you know, it'd be good to have the seller's name in a, in a closing statement, and also who does these appraisals? Because I've, I've had games played with me with appraisals before, and, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to know that. I think that, that that would be good information because, you know, as stewards of the taxpayers' dollars here, I think it's very important that, that that information is shared, it's transparent, it's open. And I think it's very important for me to sit here and make a decision on a 500 something thousand dollar piece of property that's, where, that we're purchasing from, somebody that we do business with. It just, to me, it just makes perfect sense to be as open and transparent, to ensure our citizens that this is a, a straight-up deal. I, I just would, would hope that we would get more information in the future about this. As a matter of fact, I'm going to, I'm going to withdraw my second, and I think, did I make the second on that one? No, I didn't. Okay, there I go again.
I would indicate to you that on the closing documents, as in the committee item, we do provide the closing documents. Once this property is completely acquired and all the documents are completed, we do submit that as an informational item to you. And we did provide a five percent contingency on this one because it is very large, as in the past when Councilwoman DeWes had asked for that. And we can certainly provide the appraisals as needed.
Yeah, I'm not going to support this today. Thank you.
Do you need a second, Mr. Chair?
No, there's not a, there's one already in order.
Okay.
And I'm going to join Mr. Johnson. I think you make a good point on, on, on that. I know your predecessor got in a lot of trouble over appraisers, and, and so you just brought up a ghost I didn't even want to think about there, but yeah, so I'm going to be...
So to make or that motion, I'll withdraw.
So there is no motion on the floor. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item is subject property acquisition A-6101-D-2550-S-2588 and S-2, not, five, S, excuse me, S-2596 Campus Heights subdivision. And please bear with me as I go through this next piece. The City Council authorized the purchase of parcel A-6101, parcel ID number 14-TAC-1S-TAC-29-TAC-2000-TAC-018-TAC-02, in the amount of $95,000 plus $60,000 for replacement housing, moving costs, reestablishment, incidentals, other payments in accordance with federal relocation guidelines, plus $3,542 for closing miscellaneous costs and legal fees, plus a 10 percent contingency in the amount of $15,854.20. And parcel D-2550, parcel ID number 14-TAC-1S-TAC-29-TAC-2103-TAC-000-TAC-002, in the amount of $83,000 plus $30,000 for relocation, moving costs, reestablishment, incidentals, other payments in accordance with federal relocation guidelines, plus $3,383 for closing miscellaneous costs and legal fees, plus a 10 percent contingency in the amount of $11,638.30. And parcel S-2588, parcel ID number 14-TAC-1S-TAC-29-TAC-2000-TAC-012-TAC-002, in the amount of $80,000 plus $85,000 for replacement housing, moving costs, reestablishment, incidentals, other payments in accordance with federal relocation guidelines, plus $3,342 for closing miscellaneous costs and legal fees, plus a 10 percent contingency in the amount of $16,834.20. And parcel S-2596, parcel ID number 14-TAC-1S-TAC-29-TAC-2000-TAC-016-TAC-002, in the amount of $69,000 plus $66,000 for replacement housing, moving costs, reestablishment, incidentals, other payments in accordance with federal relocation guidelines, plus $3,210 for closing miscellaneous costs and legal fees, plus a 10 percent contingency in the amount of $13,821 for a total authorization of $639,624.70.
Next item, please. What, sorry? Move to approval.
Second.
This is motion and...
Yes, sir.
I'm going to oppose on the issues I brought forth on the previous issue. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And so shall I.
These were appraisers. They did have appraisal on them.
Yes, sir.
I was just wondering a bit of our rules and procedures. The previous item did not get moved and seconded. It didn't fail. It just, it was withdrawn, and, and it was clear that there was a lack of information, and, and I don't think the council opposes the purchase. It was just the structure around it. And so because of the objections raised, I think that I will be voting against this as well. And I, I guess if it gets voted down now, I guess if the, if the staff brings that information for this one as well, then those on the prevailing side can bring it back up. Is that, okay?
Mr. President?
Yes. I think you're better off just letting it drop.
No.
And the, the reason I, the reason I'm recommending that to you is because the mayor's staff can just bring this back to you next month with the supporting documentation that Mr. Johnson was looking at.
I still feel the compulsion to talk.
Oh, yes, sir.
And I'm going to speak to this issue and the one that we just talked about before. I'm trying to think how far I can go in revealing why I'm concerned. But we're talking about the potential of a lot of jobs going down the tube very rapidly. There has been a fair appraisal done. The offer has been made and accepted. The movement is because of the potential of what will be done on this property. Now, if you want to deep-six this at a time when so many people need jobs, you may go ahead and do so. But I want you to do so with that in mind. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. She was first.
Yes, Ms. Myers.
I would ask, like to ask Ms. Crawford about, get a little more information about this one. Are these parcels here all residential homeowners?
Most of these are residential homeowners. I believe you have one on Douglas that might be a, a small business. But I would like to remind council that we're four years into this project, well, actually, we're five years into this project. Every time that you've asked to see an appraisal, we've bought one to you. We don't necessarily tell you the appraiser's name or anything of that because your staff basically is allowing a third-party professional to drive this, this acquisition program. These are key parcels within the Phase 1, which we've identified over to Air Lane. If you want us to bring it back, that's something that's...
Well, just looking at this, you know, and knowing what property is selling for over there in that area, I mean, it looks pretty reasonable to me if they, but what I was interested in is to know if these are residential homeowners, and, and one of them is a small business, right?
Yes, I believe it is. One of the other things, hold on just a moment, let me check your map. No, these are all residential, all four of these on this one. The last one was a business. But one thing that, when we do Part 24, this is a federally directed program. We have to abide by the exact directions of this program. If we fail in any way, we jeopardize our federal and our state funding. So our relocation specialist follows this by the book, and these are homeowners that when we get through with this project, they have to be in as good or better position than they were when we came to them.
Okay, I'm going to support this, this particular recommendation here, but I would like for you to send me the appraisal information, if you don't mind.
Each one of these properties have been appraised, and a review appraisal has been performed on each and every one of them.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, too, and I, you know, is, from this day forward, if we could get the information of the seller, the appraisal, of the appraiser, and who did the review appraisal, I can probably go along with this stuff, but the previous one, you know, to have someone that does business with, anyhow, I'm not going to go through. We, I just would prefer, and we're very much alike, and if, if we could have that backup information from here on out, I would appreciate it. Because I'm going to have trouble supporting it, and I'm just going to give you all a heads up. I'd like to see the name of the seller, and I'd like to see the appraiser, and I'd like to see who did the review appraisal. I would very much appreciate that. I don't know how, I think we've, we've had this discussion, I don't know, a bunch of times. Maybe, maybe I'm just not communicating it properly. Sometimes I wish I had the communicating skills of Mr. Spencer or Mr. DeWes, but maybe I'm just not communicating it properly. But I'll go along with this one, but, but from here on out, thank you, Mr. President.
You got applause. Did you see that?
Yeah, you know, I can't recall that I've ever voted against one of these, but I, I do think that Mr. Johnson brings up, brings up some good points. And the one reason I'd like for Dr. Wu to withdraw his motion is because then staff could just simply bring this back to the next committee of the whole. Yes.
There's a deadline.
That's you. A remedy.
I'm sorry.
I have a remedy. I wanted to offer a substitute.
Yes.
To...
There's a deadline, and the two pieces are part of one. And if we, you want to deep-six it, for whatever reason you want to, that's certainly the council prerogative. But we have been doing this process for how many years, Ms. Crawford?
2004 was our first acquisition.
2004. This is not our first time at the rodeo. Have we done it exactly the same way?
We've never indicated the homeowners because when we first met with them, they had some hesitation about having their name put in the paper and knowing exactly how much money they were going to receive. And that's the main reason. Most of these are residents, and if you've dealt with some of these residents in there, most of them are elderly in nature, and they're very protective. If that's what you request, then that's what we can look at. But in the past, we've used the parcel numbers. Anybody that's interested in this can go to the website for the county tax appraiser and see exactly who owns these properties. But it does take a little bit of background dealing.
Ms. DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think of greatest concern here is what is the, part of the official record that we are making our decisions on? What I have found in my, trying to find any document, that if we go into Fortis and we're looking at official actions of council, we have a document in front of us with a summary and some supporting documents, but a lot of times, it's not the most important ones. They're brought to us as a presentation, they're brought to us as an information item, or in print in front of us, and that is not entered into the record as part of the official document unless asked for. So there may be an informational item this week of these appraisals sent to every council member here, but if a citizen, five years from now, wants to go back and go, well, what went on with that? Not just this specifically, this is anything we do. There is a huge gap in the, the information that is online and available to anyone that needs to find it. And appraisals are the most important part of this, this equation. It's not the people, and I totally agree with Ms. Crawford, that those people deserve their privacy. There should be a policy of council in this and any other transaction, just like someone has to disclose if they're doing business with the city otherwise, that be part of this. And if they do, then I'm sorry, their name has to be told. Otherwise, they do remain anonymous to us. But the appraisal, that has nothing to do with it. It is an appraisal establishing the value, establishing our decision based on the math that's put forward. So it is like saying that you want to bake a cake without the So it is like saying that you want to bake a cake without the cake form and just see what you get. That's, that's not what we as a legislative and policy body need to do. So we need appraisals with this. I mean, there's so many gaps in what we get to make our decisions. So this isn't an indictment of this program. It's a wonderful program. We are headed in a wonderful direction. I want to support this, but I want it to be an official part of the record of this decision that's ratified on Thursday night, the appraisals on these properties.
Let me, let me, let me ask you this. Yes, if we had everything that Mr. Johnson was looking for provided to us by Thursday night, we had it entered into the official record, and we voted for this, let's just say it passed unanimously, we voted for it as a separate issue and not on the consent agenda, would you be satisfied with that? So you could make a yes or no decision Thursday night based on that information?
Yeah, I can, I can do that, but I would like it to move forward that we have the appraisals attached with all this from here on out.
Okay. Now, that, I think that's what, something where you're going to have to review your council procedures and, and change that, or maybe we can do it at the end of the meeting.
Do we need to act on that substitute to the motion that I offered?
Would you please?
That we ask for the appraisals to be included in this document as part of the official record and then what Councilman Johnson said going forward, that may be a separate decision.
Yeah, I think that is separate one there.
But I'm asking that that's an official part of this motion, that the appraisals be included, both.
We would definitely be able to do that. I will tell you that the appraisals, because this is a state project, our records are very detailed and they are on Fortis and they are for individuals to see. Our close act documents are immaculate. So it's not a problem identifying these. The only thing I will tell you is these are commercial, they're, they're very detailed. They do the income approach, the sales approach, and the comparison approach. So they're very volusome, but we can certainly do that.
I'm just asking they be attached.
Okay, be attached, right.
That's pretty easy to do and available for citizens to see later on, how we made our decision.
Dr. Wu.
And my council, fellow council members, as Ms. Crawford said, there are some sellers that wish to preserve their identity and hopefully that y'all would respect that aspect of it.
You know, I don't have a problem with individual homeowners protecting their identity, but when you have a, a, a commercial piece of property, I think that then, I think it would be good if we did include that name.
Yes.
And, you know, again, I, I've been the victim of the appraisal scam. Okay? I've been, I've been a victim of it. So, you know, I, I, I know it very well and I won't go on record about how I, how it happened to me.
No, I, I understand your passion.
But a piece of property, you know, in this, in this, in this na, in the same vicinity, Dr. Wu.
I understand.
In the same vicinity.
I understand. I'm not arguing.
Okay, okay. So anyhow, thank you.
All right, so, but you're willing to go along with that, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Spencer?
Quick question from Ms. Crawford. Those appraisals could be what, seventy pages?
Yeah, at least so.
Luminesce, a hundred?
Yes.
And I know most appraisals have a summary report?
Yes.
That could be five pages?
We can provide you with a summary report and also the documentation from our relocation specialist.
I mean, you could electronically, you don't have...
Yes, we can.
Right. I mean, I just, I think she's brought a good point. I don't think the environmental advisory board would advocate nine sets of one-hundred-page packets.
No, I don't want that.
No, I understood it to be electronic.
In the past, we have provided the appraisals on a disc for Mr., for Mr. Johnson. So we can very, we can do that or we can do the summary, either way.
Okay.
All right.
Dr. Wu.
Again, I, I want to thank my fellow council members because I think it's, I think it's good to be listening, you know, and I understand where you're coming from and I, you know, understand. I implore counsel, and it may be your will anyway, to consider both parcels because it is...
Well, I'm going to come back to that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. Can we just go ahead and vote? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that passes unanimously. Let's go back to item number fourteen, please, and just read the short title, sir. Don't go through the whole recommendation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Item number fourteen is subject property acquisition X-2424 Campus Heights subdivision.
Okay. Before you do, would you move the, move the recommendation?
Yes, I would. A second.
No, okay, you've moved it. We need a second.
I think somebody had already moved it.
Who?
All right, then I moved recommendation. Sorry.
Yeah, all right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, what we're going to have to do is amend that motion.
Okay.
Okay, to include the same verbiage that we had for the last one. Can you work with that? Okay. Okay, so, so do you accept that?
I, I do and can I make one quick statement?
Okay, yes, sir.
The reason that I may know more than other folks is the airport is in my district. And so it's not that I think other folks have been excluded, it's just in the fact that what I was told was activity that was going to happen or possibly potentially happen there. And so when I'm throwing things out, it's not saying that, that you don't know what's going on and I do, it's simply that I've been privy to some information and I was asked to keep it confidential as most business dealings are. But, but I cannot express my gratitude to my fellow colleagues for looking at this because I think it's very important for us to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I had withdrawn my, my motion in the first case that we read this because of the concerns that were brought up and what was pointed out by Councilman Johnson. And I could only support this tonight. Obviously, we're adding all of the other requests in, but it, it, it has been pointed out that this entity has done business with the city in the past. And I feel an incumbent on us as far, excuse me, as part of this official record, that to what extent this person has done business with the city. If, I'll leave that to your discretion, Mr. President. If it's a five-year period, it's probably enough, but just so the citizens know how much business they've done with the city, I feel that appropriate. It's the only way I can support it.
We need to actually incorporate that into the motion if, if, or have it as an amendment.
So I offer as an amendment to the main motion that we request a document from the seller as to all business transactions or contracts they have entered into with the City of Pensacola in the past five years.
Five years, okay. Do you accept that, Dr. Wu? Okay. All right, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item. Oh, and by the way, Madam Clerk, Mr. Reynolds, Dr. Cox is, fourteen and fifteen will be voted on separately, not part of the consent agenda. All right? Because that's pending the documentation being provided. Okay? Item sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item sixteen is subject airport approval amendment number two to Arrow's LLC lease and operating agreement. The recommendation is at the request of the tenant, staff request that city council consider for approval the amendment number two to the Arrow's LLC lease and operating agreement at the Pensacola International Airport. Note that as a result of the receipt of a Part 16 complaint filed by Pensacola Aviation Center, the city attorney has raised concerns regarding unknown civil liability consequences that may flow to the city given a reversal of the decision of the Federal Aviation Administration hearing.
Okay.
Move the approval. Second.
We should have a second discussion.
Um...
Yes.
Well, I'd like to bring up the letter that Mr. Messer shared with us and ask him to comment on his opinion on this matter as it relates to any potential liability for the city. And if we can ask, well, I'll let you go if you, if you could.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. As a result of some questions that are raised concerning my comments regarding unknown civil liability, I simply deferred to the subject matter expert, who's the attorney that we retained in Philadelphia to handle this matter, and asked him to amplify those so counsel would have a better idea of, of, in essence, to coalesce the unknown. And whatever he says in the letter, he says. I mean, I don't have anything to add or delete from it. I just defer to him. He's the subject matter expert. And that, that letter should have been included on the, the committee report. It wasn't, which is why I sent it to you this morning, just in the interest of completeness.
Well, this attorney is recommending, it says accordingly, in order for the city to protect itself, it would be necessary at a minimum to require Innisfree, assuming Innisfree is a financially responsible party, to identify the city for the cost of removal and repair to the airport premises, which may be necessitated by the construction of the facility. Has, have there been any conversations with Innisfree regarding the recommendations of this attorney? Ledwin?
May I speak to that?
Yes.
All right. Please.
The attorney did identify that there could be possible ramifications about dismantling. What they're proposing to construct is a hangar. That, in the case of the airport, that would not be dismantled. It might be something that would be, this entity has the ability to do hangar keeper services under a permit that you would approve without being an FBO. So there would not be a structure that would have to be dismantled. If you were to look at the, the agreement that's been presented to you, the amendment, it does have language in there that we would not be held liable for any financial responsibilities or anything that arise from that, and it is part of the agreement. The other item within this amendment, when we came before you in July, when you approved the minimum standards, these minimum standards, what Mr. McQueen is proposing to do is to, is in accordance with the revisions of the minimum standards. Yes, there has been a Part 16 complaint filed, but as according to the attorney, the only thing that would prevent us from moving forward with that would be an injunction. There has not been an injunction placed by PAC. In fact, Pensacola Aviation Center has come to us and asking us to bring forth at the next committee item, a item that would allow them to provide maintenance in accordance with the revised minimum standards. We've made sure, Ms., Councilwoman DeWes asked that we have an engineer look at the operating plan of Innisfree, if they were to provide any type of plan to ev- activity on that ramp. It's attached. They have reviewed it. It is in accordance with the design group that is provided aircraft. We've complied with, Mr. McQueen has complied with all of the entities or all of the requirements within the minimum standards.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
This discussion we've had on several issues, since that was a separate document sent by Mr. Messer, if we could have that included in the permanent record of this action that we're taking tonight because it is separate, there's nowhere to record that and look back at. And then my only question would be, these concerns that were raised, and I understand Ms. Crawford addressing within the contract that they are remedied or addressed, do we as a city need to officially respond to that letter to protect ourselves and simply say it's addressed within the contract, thank you for your concerns? Or what? Because I don't know if we're exposed by them bringing those issues up and us not answering them.
Well, before we get to answering that, what I need to do is, who made the motion?
I said...
You did? Will, will you, you accept what Mr. DeWes asked?
Yes.
Okay. And there. Did you get that, ladies? Yes. Okay. Is the, the letter that Mr. Messer had, had sent become part of the official record?
It's already in there.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Okay, yes, Dr. Pratt.
Thank you. And on the topic of what the motion actually is, I moved the approval, but I didn't clarify that this recommendation is not a recommendation as we usually have. It's sort of a, not clear, but the, the motion I was intending was the approval of the amendment, not that I moved that we consider approving the amendment. And I would also like for Mr. Reynolds to clarify for us that, what the administration's recommendation is. They have a lot more information than we do. They had the letter probably before we did. I actually didn't see it yet, but I would just like to know what the official recommendation from the administration is.
This is a conversation we've had many times, Dr. Pratt and I, and once again, that the, the effect of that, the ending point of that conversation is that we have requested that you consider this.
And I guess my question is, in all of your information that you have studied and Ms. Crawford has studied and the attorney has studied, you have put, you know, you are full-time, in your best professional judgment, do you recommend that we do this?
May I?
Please.
I will tell you, what is being proposed is in complete compliance with the minimum standards that you approved and that you have no reason not to approve it.
Okay. I'm still going to approve it, but I just...
Yeah.
This is sort of one of my things that bothers me, that, that the administration, who has all the information, can't make a clear recommendation. We have every right to disagree with them, but I would like to have clear recommendations so that we know where they stand. So that's just my point.
Mr. President, if I can, and I'll make it very brief.
Go ahead.
There are times where we will have staff available so you can answer all the questions, where we will bring something forward for you to consider an issue. It's not that we don't have a, a, a feeling one way or the other. There are some times where it is appropriate for you to make that decision and not necessarily staff for multiple reasons. And, and, you know, Ms. Crawford has given you her opinion and, and, you know, you have a conflicting or you have a, another opinion from the city attorney on some of his concerns. So in reality, we just want you to consider all of those variables and make a call. You know, that's essentially, and this is probably the third time, I believe, we've, we've had something like this come up, but it's always the same thing. There are reasons for that and ultimately, you can approve it, not approve it, or decide not to do anything with it at all, but you've got consideration from different parts of the staff in regards to the issue.
And may I follow up then? I should have also asked, Mr. Messer, would you recommend that we approve this?
And also answer Mr. DeWes's question, should we respond? So...
And the question was, should we respond to the letter from the Schneider Law Firm?
That's what Mr. DeWes asked.
Those are our lawyers.
Oh.
Mr. DeWes, would you clarify your question on responding?
Sorry.
Clarify your question on responding?
The question or the what?
Yes. You wanted an, an answer on should we respond to that letter that Mr. Messer...
I just wanted to make sure we're not exposed legally, even though it's addressed within the contract, if we have to state that or if simply knowing that it is in the contract is enough. Do we officially respond or are we legally exposed if we don't respond to the letter?
Okay, to this letter?
That letter.
And the answer is no, this is a letter from our own attorneys. These are the attorneys that, that we hired, the airport director hired to represent the airport in this litigation. I'm not representing the airport. So this, there's no response required.
Well, but there were concerns brought up.
Right.
So who determines that it's okay and it, and it's addressed in the contract?
Well, I think that's a council decision.
See, so...
I mean, I, I have no recommendation other than to defer to these attorneys. I mean, I, I don't know bananas about this litigation. That's why we hired the experts.
We will. I can tell you that the attorneys have indicated to us that they believe that this is a, they're going to be filing a motion to dismiss. They believe that we have a very good standing in this and that we are pursuing, we're proceeding with improving competition on the airport, both for Innisfree and for PAC with your next item that we're coming forward with.
I know, but Dr. Pratt didn't get her question.
Yep, thank you.
So as the attorney for the city, is your recommendation to approve this tonight or whenever on Thursday or not?
Thank you, Councilwoman Pratt. Let me try to make it more explicit. I, I take responsibility for the... responsibility for the consequences of what I litigate. I'm not litigating this case.
You are the city attorney for the city of Pensacola.
I am not, I, I am the city attorney for the city of Pensacola, and if you want the city attorney's recommendation, it will be to follow the advice of the attorneys that you pay a lot of money to, to represent you, which are these folks. Now, you may choose to disregard that, and I have no opinion one way or the other. I, I'm not, as a city attorney, going to get in the middle of something that I don't have any responsibility for. I believe I've discharged my legal duties by obtaining an opinion from you, from the expert attorneys that represent the city on this matter, and you may choose to follow it or disregard it.
And I guess, then, will you tell me, I just was handed this. I, I don't know how I didn't see it yet, but it, does, do these attorneys recommend that, or think that it is okay for us to approve this tonight?
I believe in essence, these attorneys say that you can go either way. It's your decision. It's a risk benefit analysis. On the one hand, they believe that we have a strong case in front of the hearing officer. On the other hand, they tell you that there are substantial risks, but I believe that's a decision that, that only this council is empowered to make. Okay, I've got several that want to speak. Dr. Wu?
I, I can go last.
Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. My question is, has Innisfree responded or looked at that letter and have any problems in meeting some of those issues that were addressed in that letter?
I, I can't speak for Innisfree, sir, but Innisfree is here.
But in actuality, what you're telling me, that, that is not part of what you, what we are proving here tonight.
There are conditions within the agreement that indicates that, that holds us harmless for some items, but not for the entire actions of Pensacola Aviation and their Part 16 complaint.
And you also indicated, I think, that we currently got litigation going regarding the minimum standards, et cetera, and that decision has not been made yet.
No, sir, it has not. A Part 16 complaint, which is a federal complaint, has been filed with the FAA, and our attorneys are in the, in the process right now of processing a motion to dismiss.
Okay, so, but we do.
But that would have to be acted on by the FAA.
The contents of the letter has not been raised with Innisfree in terms of whether they would adhere to any of those conditions.
Innisfree is aware of the letter. He's here, sir. He can speak to that if you would like him to.
Might not be a bad idea, if Mr. McQueen wants it.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Would you like to sit down?
Oh.
Mr. President and Council, I have read the letter, and I, I have often seen threats made, not only to myself, but to the city. As a matter of fact, a few years ago, we had the same situation where threats were made to the city, and the city decided that, after doing the risk analysis, that it was probably the, the best thing for the city to move forward on building a hotel at the airport. I don't see this, myself, as any different. There's some intimidation. I think when, when I talked to each of you one-on-one, I knew that this was going to happen, and all of y'all, many of y'all, actually, every one of y'all said, you know, these are the parts of being in a city that you have to deal with. You know, people are always going to come after the city if they don't agree with some of the actions of the city. Some take a harder look and a harder stance than others. This case, the avenue that they've taken is through a Part 16 review, which is their prerogative. This letter, where the, the cities, or the airport's attorney is asking for indemnification, we've agreed to indemnify the city for our actions. What we cannot do is indemnify the city for any actions with PAC. That's, that's where we had to draw the line. We don't have any idea what those actions might be. It'll probably take years to figure that out, if anything.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. McQueen, and I wouldn't expect you to take what Pensacola
Aviation would want to absorb, but, but I would somewhat would expect, and I'm glad to hear you say that you would take care of your, your end of the deal.
We are, we are indemnifying the city for any of our actions, and that, and that's in the agreement that this airport manager referred to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got Mr. Spencer, who's not spoken yet to this topic, so please.
I just want to make sure fellow council members know that because of my current professional engagement with Mr. McQueen's company, I am unable to comment or vote on this particular matter.
I've got you.
May I respond to that?
Yes, sir.
This is about the fifth time that you've done that. We need to get you squared away.
Well, Mr., it's, it's either.
We could hire another architect.
Yeah. We don't want Mr. McQueen to stop developing in our community.
I wish I could say more of that. I'd have more money in the bank.
Okay, I don't know who was first, one of the two general ladies.
Well, the way I'm, I'm reading this, this letter is that the attorney is saying, and Mr. McQueen has already said that they've agreed to indemnify the city for any loss caused by their actions, but we've already taken the action that could hold us, that could make us liable. And it says it right here. Additionally, the city would need to be indemnified for any damages that PAC may be able to obtain by virtue of claims of lost revenue or other damages sustained by PAC as a result of the revisions to minimum standards allowing for the additional FBO. Well, we've already done that. So, I mean, I, I feel comfortable. I mean, we, we've already put ourselves in a position of being liable because we've already, if, if they win their complaint, because we've already changed the minimum standards. Is that right?
That's correct. And again, PAC has asked us to modify their agreement in accordance with the revised minimum standards.
Which will be coming?
At the December meeting.
Which, which will be, we will be bringing forward in December.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to speak real quickly, since I had brought up these questions and needed the clarification. I'd like to thank Ms. Myers for her clarification on this, too, because I was looking for a solid answer. And I'm glad that Mr. McQueen was able to come up and talk to the issues as far as Innisfree, and this is a solid decision.
Okay, great. I think we're ready. No, go ahead.
I want to thank Councilman Myers for saying what I was going to say. The question is not whether we get in the pool or not. We, we jumped in the pool a long time ago. And at that time, I had great trust in the airport director and her direction, and I continue to do so. So, I, I will support this, because, as I said, we're already in the pool. It's not a question, do we get in or not. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we've, on this next issue, we've got an attorney that at 2:50 an hour has been sitting out there four hours, so he's glad to see us drag this out, so.
Move him up next time.
Why didn't we move him up?
He needed to be first.
It's not coming out of our pocket, so. Release of civil restitution lien for partial payment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda is subject release of civil restitution lien for partial payment. The recommendation is that city council authorize the mayor to release the city's lien against certain property for a partial payment of a civil restitution lien in the amount of $7,653.65.
Counsel? Who'd approve? Check it. Motion's in order. Who desires to speak? Mr. Sir?
I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay. Any questions?
Release of civil.
Okay, comments from the public? All in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have one, one comment. The, the release price is going to be off by a few dollars because interest is run since the letter was first sent to Mr. Messer. It's only a matter of a few dollars, but the, the figure that was provided is not completely accurate, but it's within a few dollars.
But that's, we're voting on a precise figure here, I think, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, so, you know, you want us to vote on it or not?
I'll take it.
I thought he meant just from the beginning of the meeting to now the interest had changed.
Oh, yeah, by about a thousand dollars, yeah.
And, and Mr. President, if I may, if, if we can have that revised figure for Thursday, we can, we can bring that forward and have it approved.
Okay.
I sent a, I sent a letter to Mr. Messer's legal assistant yesterday, updating the figures.
We'll have that plugged in.
I'll give it to Mr. Reynolds.
The ayes already have it, but I guess until the nays have had their say. Mr. Townsend?
I just wanted to ask a question. I realize that we were on this item. We paying the amount of?
Just going to wake you up every night.
Oh, yeah.
We're writing you a check.
Seven thousand, but somewhere in the summary here, you indicated that this individual has other properties, and that we were going to be able to, that the balance of the lien would be placed against other properties. Am I correct?
As far as I know, he has no other properties.
But didn't they stipulate that somewhere in this particular document?
It says that if he has it, it's, this release is only against this one piece of property, and actually, he inherited this property.
Okay.
So, if he has other property or inherits other properties, before the lien expires, the lien would still be a lien on those other properties. This.
But there's no other property, so we don't know whether we're going to get the other seven thou. Maybe you can.
Yeah, and if I, if I may, Councilman, the individual, as far as we can tell, has no other properties. He is a multiple felon, you know, clearly someone that, you can't get blood out of a turnip.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, Mr. President, for, for clarification, maybe I can redeem myself here. My recommendation would be to approve this request. This individual's had issues with the state attorney since 1991 through the present day on a consistent basis, so I, I don't believe there's any reasonable expectation of receiving any more money. Okay, thanks. All opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay. Top-ranked firm.
Mr. President, the next item on the agenda is subject approval of top-ranked firm RFQ-12-TAC-032 Energy Savings Consultant for City Facilities. The recommendation is that city council, one, approve the ranking of the firms by the selection committee for RFQ-12-TAC-032 Energy Savings Consultant for City Facilities, and, two, authorize staff to work with Siemens Industry Incorporated, the top-ranked firm, to bring back energy and water savings performance-based contracts to city council for approval.
Move the approval.
Second. Discussion. Public? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Item 21, sir.
Mr. President, the last item on the agenda for this particular section is subject award of bid number 12-TAC-044 Construction Services Legion Field Resource Center. The recommendation is that city council award a contract for the construction of the Legion Field Resource Center to AE New Jr., Pensacola, Florida, the lowest and most responsible bidder with a base bid amount of $2,597,000, plus bid alternates 4, 7, 8, 10, and 18 in the amount of $23,993 for a grand total of $2,620,993 plus a 5% contingency. Further, that city council approve the supplemental budget resolution reallocating $250,000 from the 2017 general capital equipment within the Penny for Progress Funds to provide sufficient funding for the Legion Field Resource Center.
Move for approval. Second. Motion and a second. If Mr. Greer's out there, I, I thought I just saw him, have him round up Councilman Johnson, please. Round up. Thanks. Well, he's the one that was fighting hardest for this the other day, so I just wanted to make sure he was here for Councilman Johnson.
Mr.?
And visit, he's, he's.
Where'd he go?
Yes.
I would just like to ask that, should this pass, which I believe it will, since we have that requirement for the campus heights disclosure for Mr. AE New, that this be part of that disclosure?
I think, yeah, it, okay, yeah.
It was before, so I just want to make sure that it's all.
Yeah, sure, be, yeah, all, yeah. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was excited to support the Legion Field Resource Center going along, back whenever we took the first actions on it. I, I supported it at a $3 million budget. I imagine there's been value engineering, lots of work to try to get down to way over budget, but I think that I, I'm disappointed that we couldn't have it at the budget that we set. If we can't get projects in on that budget, then we need to reconsider how they're designed or what we need to do, and so I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson, the reason I had you rounded up is we're on the Legion Field issue, and you were so passionate about that the other day, that I wanted to make sure you were here for it.
Well, that's okay. I was in the restroom, and then I had to talk to my mom for a second before she went to sleep, but I'm back.
How, how is, how is she?
She's doing good. She's got an interview at 8:00 in the morning. I'll let y'all know how it goes later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I know that, I, we've got to let Mr. Wingate speak, too. Ms. Myers? I wouldn't dare. He's all right. All right, he's all right, yeah. Okay, cool.
You know, I, I've really thought a lot about this, and, I mean, I could, I know it's going to pass, but I'll tell you, I just don't think I can support it because I, I supported, I was, I voted against it from the beginning because I did not feel that it was fair to move the West Side Library, and I ju, I just can't, I just can't support it. And I know it's going to pass, but I just, for myself and, and good conscience, I just can't do it because of, I didn't support it in the beginning, and I'm going to, and I, and I have consistently been against the impact this, this has had on the West Side Library, and I'm just not going to support it. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Raise up, show hands, please. Okay. All opposed?
Have I seen that AE New name somewhere?
And they are, they are, this is going to be included in that package.
I already asked for that. I asked for it.
Do you have anything you want to talk about? No, sir. All right. Discussion, I am, I am going to ask a favor of the council, this being my last committee of the whole, and since we've already moved some things forward to the next committee of the whole, can we just not have any more discussion tonight?
I've got one thing, one thing. It's, take very quick.
Okay.
It's something of importance.
You think it is?
Well, the TDC, there was an article in the paper about the TDC this morning.
Yes.
And there is an important vote on November 22nd, 7th, 27th, after our swearing-in ceremony. I would ask this council if they will appoint me temporarily as a representative, since we won't have representation on the TDC since Mr. Gerald's is leaving. Just temporarily be the appointee to the TDC for that important vote at 3:00 PM on the 27th of November.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Can we do that? Well, I didn't know if we could find, I had to ask my council.
Can we say for that meeting?
Yeah, for that meeting.
Temporarily for that meeting.
And I would like to be appointed to it, just to be let known in the back.
That's your practice.
Yes, sir.
Can there be a substitute for me as well?
Substitute, yes, okay. Who's going to sub for Dr. Wu? About Mr. Spencer?
I move, Mr. Spencer.
Second.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes. Well, now, Chief, I think you could probably go, but we got to do the consent agenda.
You know, I don't know if that's acceptable by the bylaws of the TDC.
Okay.
Okay.
For you to sub, you mean?
Now, the first one would be on that item two, is that correct? That was unanimous. Okay, we're, folks, we're doing the consent agenda. Item number two was unanimous. Okay, so that's not going to be part of it, okay. So, item number two. Funding for the, we didn't vote on the funding particularly. So, under the mayor's items, it's items number five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 20.
Move the approval.
Okay. Move to approve? Second. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Now, for committee of the whole items, that will be under the discussion item, retaining outside legal counsel. That was eight to one, well, actually, seven to one, I'm sorry. And so that'll be on the committee of the whole. And then items 14 and 15, even though they passed unanimously, that's pending the report, and item number 21. Okay. All right. Move to approve?
Move the approval.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you all. Okay.
Thank you.
Very, very, very much.
Re-adjourned. Hit the gavel.